Now they're coming in. While they're on the, there you go.
A lot of them.
Yeah, I think we're good to go now.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May two thousand twenty-two of the Brighton zoning board of appeals. So just let me quickly just let you know how we handle this meeting. Generally, what we do is that as your application is called, then you could identify yourself. We will let you present your application. You should let us know why you believe we should approve your application. And the members may have questions. When they finish with the questions, then we will ask on the Zoom call if there's anyone that would like to speak regarding your application. And if they do, they will speak. And when they finish, we will close the public area and move on to the next application. Once we have completed all of them, it might take a couple minute break if we need to. And if not, we will proceed into the deliberations. You're welcome to stay on the call and listen into the deliberations. However, there's really no further discussion with applicants on the board members or anyone related to that. You could just hear the deliberations. We make our decisions tonight unless an action is tabled for more information. Other than that, you would hear tonight what happens. If you don't want to stay on the call, you can call the right. Excuse me, the building department office tomorrow, and you can find out what the result of your application was. Okay, so that's how we do it. So Rick, at this time, can you let me know if the meeting was properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was advertised in the daily daily record of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, wonderful. So can you call the role, please?
Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Mr. D. Augustine.
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Mites.
There.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Please let the record show all members are present.
Okay, so Rick, do you have any information you'd like to give to the board before we start?
Yes, just for the record, I'd like to state that we received two letters after posting of the final agenda. One letter was from Mindy Zaglin, Zaglin Group in opposition to application five A O three twenty-two. The second letter was from Ms. Betsy Brug of Woods Over at Gilman in opposition to applications five A O one twenty-two and five A O two twenty-two.
Okay, very good. So consider those. All right, we do have minutes. Do we have any issues on the minutes? Excuse me, of the March meeting.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, on page nine, line five. Please delete my name. On page fourteen, line twenty-two. The last word should be neighbor. I think you took care of page fifteen, Rick. So we don't need to do that. Page twenty-six, line thirteen. The second word should be line, L I N E. On page thirty-five, line twenty-one. The first word should begin say who or what by a six foot brick wall. Not them. I mean, who is it that's going to be blocked by the six foot wall? In the facts, findings, in fact, line twenty-one. It doesn't say, and I think it should. It just is them. And being of, you know, findings, in fact, it should be more specific, I think. So anybody want to? I don't know. Let me see. It was made by Heather. Do you know what you meant with here? Line twenty-one.
Can you tell me the page again?
Yes, page thirty-five. Line twenty-one, number one findings.
I'm not sure about that one.
But do you think we need to be specific just in case something comes up down the road rather than just saying them? I don't know. That's why I raised it.
What do you think, Rick?
Judy, read it to me, please.
Sure, it's line twenty-one on page thirty-five. And it's, it starts out with them. And my question to myself and to you is, should we say who or what rather than just them? Because it's a findings.
What I probably had put was, I probably had said the road.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, then.
So Judy, we're changing them to the road?
The road, yes. That's what Heather said.
Thank you.
On page thirty-seven, line seven. Um, number three, it says the time of the weekly ten minute power ups will occur. Test, should it be or something? Not ups, I don't think.
I think that's.
Is that a word?
I think that's a term that they use in the industry, power.
All right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And that is all that I have.
While, while we're here, the only two that I noted was on page thirty-seven, line nine, it says there will be the installation with an I. It should be insta. And then it would be the same thing reflected in the discussion. Page thirty-nine, line twenty-three should read installation, not instillation.
Yeah. I just remembered that is a spelling error, but not a technical thing.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, can I get a motion for the minutes, please?
I second.
I'll second Matt's motion.
Okay, very good. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
I got it. All those, all those in favor of the most of the approval of the March minutes with corrections, Mr. Primo?
abstain.
Ms. Schwartz.
I.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. De, De Augustine.
Hi.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to approve with corrections carries.
Tonight, if you wish, he could be Mr. D.
I know.
Are you okay with that, Mr. D?
I mean, you know, it's fine. I've been called all sorts of things.
Yes, yes, haven't we all?
I'll get it. I'll get it. I'll get it.
Okay, well, you work on that, Rick. All right. Okay, very good. Okay, so thank you. So let's move on. When you're ready, Rick, we can read the first application.
I already did the first two applications.
Good.
Application five A O one twenty-two, application Reza Armanish, architect and Guy Anley, owner of property located at twenty-seven twenty West Indiana Road for an area variance in section two oh five dash twelve to allow for forty-five parking spaces in conjunction with a new grocery store in lieu of the minimum fifty-five parking spaces required by code. Also, describing application plans on file and application five A O two twenty-two, same applicants, same owner, same property address for an area variance in section two oh five dash seven to allow for impervious surface area to increase after site modifications from eighty-three point two percent to eighty-four point nine percent and new the maximum sixty-five percent allowed by code, all describing application plans on file.
Okay, so who do we have speaking, please? Who do we have speaking for applications five?
Reza, you're muted.
Okay, there I can't see.
Mute.
There we go.
Okay. Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Reza Armanish. I'm the architect for this project. Basically, this twenty-seven twenty West Henry Road about maybe about mile north of Brighton and Briada Town Line Road and the east side of the road. The place was used as a restaurant, Asian restaurant, which has been vacant for a long time. The site itself is about twenty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-three square foot or point five to two acre, almost half an acre. The building located on the build, on the site is about ten thousand nine hundred fifty-five square foot, approximately eleven thousand square foot. The building itself is hundred eighty-one feet long and approximately sixty feet, a little bit over sixty feet wide. Is situated approximately more than sixty feet from the West Henry Road. The owner wants to establish an Asian supermarket or a specialty supermarket. It's not going to be a regular supermarket. It's going to be a specialty. So the flow is not the same as the regular grocery store. Also, within the building itself, as you see on the floor plan that is shown on the screen, almost three thousand square foot of it is the storage area. The area that basically is utilized is about eight thousand square foot at the front. Based on the requirement of the zoning code, hundred, two hundred square foot per per vehicle, per auto, I need fifty-five cars. If you count the storage as part of the grocery store. And I'm providing, actually, there was a mistake that I'm providing forty-one parking spaces. These parking spaces, there's five at the front, fourteen at the back, and about twenty-two on this, on the north side of the building, which was based on the easement that I was given, my understanding of the easement, that they could park on that side. And also egress and ingress also was permitted on the easement, which we submitted the documents, the deed and the easement. The site slopes from east to west approximately point oh percent, a little bit less than one percent.
So Reza, can I just interrupt you for a quick second? Sure. And ask Brendan, can you go up one screen to the, to the site plan, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Reza, go ahead.
Thank you. So as you see, originally I had forty-five, but by the time, based on the requirements of the accessible parking area, there's two spaces that are lost and there's an overhead door on the north east of the building that basically two spaces was lost. So on my document, I show forty-five, but that's incorrect. That has to be corrected to forty-one parking spaces. So basically, we are asking the board to grant us the variance for forty-one parking spaces, given the fact that this is a specialty grocery store and the flow of the traffic of the people in and out is much less. And the average, usually each person will spend about forty-three to forty-five minutes shopping in there. And usually on the average, the maximum is from one to seven people at any time during the day. The intent is to open up about seven and close at ten P M. That's the hours of operation. So we are, the building itself is a pre-engineered building with metal siding and metal standing seam roof. But we are changing that completely based on the elevations and the floor plan that we submitted. We went to architectural board. They required certain modification. We made those modification. Unfortunately, they approved the modification. So that's behind us now. Coming to you guys with, to the zoning board and asking for that variance for the parking. One other issue is that originally existing green area or previous area is about thirty-seven fifty-four square foot, three thousand seven hundred fifty-four. The proposed is a little bit less, is three thousand three hundred seventy-three, which I'm short. Three thou, three hundred seventy-six square foot of green has been reduced from what it used to be. But that's, given that fact, what, what I did, I increased the green at the front, which is twenty foot setback. Right now is quite a bit less. But mainly the reduction in the green area is mainly to the fact that I'm parking in the back and in the back, there is a little bit more green area. If I reduce the two parking spot, I would meet the three hundred seventy, approximately three hundred seventy-six square foot shortage that I'm reducing the green area. Of course, as you see there, the front of the building, basically, it ramps up to the building, the finished floor of the building is about sixteen inch higher than the grade at the north west corner of the building, which under asphalt, it's about sixteen inch higher. So I have to ramp up to it. But that's what I showed around coming in, there's a platform, I would call it a walkway at the front that they can come up the ramp and come inside the building. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions or comments on the way.
Sir, can you, can you tell us how many employees would be in the store at any one?
Yes, based on what the owner has, has, has told me, there're going to be four to six people operating. And of course, sometimes more, I'm sad, I was told on Saturday, there're going to be eight to ten people because it's much more heavier and generally, based on my research that I did, most people, they, the busiest time of the grocery store, the regular grocery store, not, I couldn't find anything on the specialty grocery store, but on regulars, regular grocery store, it's Saturday between twelve to three P M. So they need more employee during that time in order to make sure everything goes smooth. In addition to the grocery store, also in the front, as you see on the floor plan, there's a bakery. They used to have a takeout kitchen that was removed and they said they were going to just put specialty gifts and presents for people who want to purchase it. So the takeout portion of the eating takeout portion of the food has gone, but the bakery remain.
Okay, all right. And do the operators of this business have experience in running a store like this?
Yes, sir. They are, right now she has a store in a very next to U of R on on West Henry Road. It's about maybe a mile from, there's a plaza, I forgot the name, but she has a store there that she's running the store there. And the store is pretty small, so she wants to move to a larger space, and that's why they purchased this building.
Okay, okay. All right. Other questions by the board members, please?
Yeah.
This is. Hold on, hold on, one at a time here. Okay, go ahead.
This is member right. I just had a question. The, this potential operator is operating a current store. Has she done any parking studies to show, based on the square footage of her current store, how many parking spaces are taken up in her current location?
Yes, in the plaza, basically, they allow parking in front of the store, which is about four parking spaces in front of the store. The plaza is where it's about, like I said, it's the first plaza, if you leave U of R, and you come down south about a mile from, there's a plaza, I forgot the name of the plaza.
I think it's. Is that? Plaza. Pardon me, is that Hikari Grocery? Is that the grocery store?
Yes, presently is the grocery store. They have vegetables, they have grocery goods. So that's, she's been there for over like four or five years now. There used to be another person running that grocery store. I knew them. But they sold their store to this lady and she's been operating for about five years now.
This is member Primo. As I look at the site plan, the north property line, it looks like the parking you're proposing crosses that property line onto the other property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other property owner for twenty-seven ten did not consent to this application, right?
Correct. I got the letter, Mr. Rick Di Spano. I got that middle through the email and I reviewed it. I discussed the issue with the owner. I said you need to get hold of your attorney to, to contact the attorney of the twenty-seven ten property to resolve this issue based on what I had, we submitted the deed and the easement, which was written in twenty twenty. So based on that easement, there's egress and ingress and egress allowed, and then also parking on the north side of the building. The gentleman who wrote the letter, there's some of, some of the issues he stated, I don't think they're exactly correct. The reason is we are not touching their property at all in any way, shape or form. The only thing that we are touching is the, basically putting the lines for the parking stalls. Otherwise, there's no change in the physical aspect of their property to the north. And based on the fact that I, based on my understanding of the easement document that I was given, you're allowed to park there, but of course, the owner to the south, twenty-seven twenty, needs to pay half of the maintenance cost for that whole strip, which fasten always to the north. And then, of course, to the south is Dunkin' Donuts. But it's mainly the passional gentleman who has a disagreement with the way that the easement reads. Of course, when I read the easement, the easement referred to the restaurant. Now, of course, and of course, it says whoever buys or after or they also, they can have this, but easements are not written for for use, but it's written for, for property based on my understanding. But this is a legal issue that the attorneys need to resolve to finalize this issue. But from get-go, I brought the issue up there after I talked to Mr. Di Spano. He told me what requirements are. And based on the easement, when I told the owner, I need the easement to park on the north side, otherwise, there's no way we can make this a grocery store. Then they provided me with the easement documents. And my understanding is that the easement allows for parking on the north side of the building.
Okay.
Well, so, but you know, looking at this, just, just so I'm clear, the parking that goes on to the other properties, about what, twenty-three of the spaces?
Twenty-three of the spaces? Yes, basically twenty-two and then one and a half, let's say two, yes, yes, say two, two more spaces. So it's about twenty-three, twenty-three and a half, twenty-four spaces. Your good correction.
And then that property owner did not join in this application or indicate consent to it?
No, we didn't because the easement indicates that they have the rights, the property owner has the right for egress and ingress and parking on that side based on the easement documents. Like I said, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding was that that, that was permitted.
And there hasn't been any specific information that I believe member right asked us, but I just want to be clear. You haven't put in any information as to actual parking needs or studies or, or comparable stores, correct?
No, I have done two other grocery store. One is Canton supermarket. It's in Henryada. The other one is basically was on the corner of Gregory and South Clinton. They moved the building, cut on fire. They moved the grocery from there. So I've had, like, I've had, had chances. But grocery stores, basically, the traffic flow in this specialty store, grocery store, is not the same as a regular grocery store. Based on some data that I obtained for grocery store, like, these are some of the data that I obtained. Average customer spending time in the groceries is about forty-three minutes. The busiest time is Saturday, between twelve to three P M. At any time, at any time during, any time that is in operation, one to seven adults shop at any given time. The average time that each person might go to the special regular grocery store is one point five to one point six times per week. Also, what I've learned that maybe this is due to COVID, but sixty-four percent of the US consumers in twenty twenty-one shop online. They call and then they get it. But I think my opinion is that's mainly because of the COVID issue that people don't, they don't want to go to stores. So when they call and they would pick up. And then one other, the average grocery store, the regular groceries, they're not a specialty, is about thirty to eight thousand square foot. Those are some of the actual data that I found. If need be, we can always obtain a traffic engineer to provide a full survey. They have much more data than I have, and they're much more knowledgeable than I, that, that I am regarding traffic flow in ingress, egress. So we don't, I don't think I would have any issue. Maybe I can contact S R F or another, or I'm familiar with them.
Well, and then if we could go back and maybe Brendan could do this to where it was showing the inside of the store. Now, I noticed in there that, for example, you, you have various things. You have what's called a prep counter, and then you have a sushi bar. Was that going to be where people would sit there and, and eat?
No, sir. There's no place to eat here. We did the same thing at Canton. Basically, they're like sushi bar is basically a bit of ice, the box full of ice. And they add the sushi on top of it. The same with the meat. We did this at Canton also. It's just a box with ice. And the meat is set on top so they can see it. The same with duck and chickens and seafood. So basically, the boxes in front are full of ice and they display their products on, on that.
So there's no eating, there's no eating. Customers aren't going to eat in the, in the store?
No, sir. The only place that they can sit and like have a bakery, have a coffee is at the front, which is one, two, three, four, five, six. Basically, five, seven, seven tables. And I show four chairs for each one. That's the only place that they're able to sit and.
Okay, and that's in the lobby seating area?
Yes, basically in the front area, but I had a little bit more light, more windows, so at least I could have a little bit of light coming in. We'll, we'll make sure that there's sufficient electrical power and lights that everything would be lit. But still, I prefer people sit by the, they like, most people like to sit by the windows when they go to a restaurant.
You, you said that seven tables times four, right?
Yes, sir.
So there'd be seating for twenty-eight people?
Yes, at the max, yes.
Okay. And maybe, Rick, you could help me a little bit with this. I took a look at that drainage swale to the south. Is that off their property? I mean, that drainage swale needs to have some maintenance done to it. It's, it's pretty jammed up.
Yes, I, I looked at, it gets deeper as you get toward the rest portion, near the West Henry Road. As you go back, it still slopes down. It does ravine or ditch. It goes all along the back. It flattens almost where they, at the back, more likely, but still slopes down. But that's not in this property. But people willing, we are willing to clean that up, but that's part of the property to the south, the Dunkin' Donuts path. So that's in their property.
Are you going, are you going to be conveying storm water to that, that ditch?
No, not really. A little bit on the back because the backside on the back of the, on the east side of the property, that asphalt slopes to the, toward that, toward the south. So most likely that's will, some of it will go into that thing, but the one to the north, which is actually most of it is the adjacent twenty-seven twenty property, that slopes, like I said, point oh eight percent to, from west, no, from east to west. And there are catch basins right at, there's two curb cuts there. One curb, between the two curb cuts, there's about maybe a broken curb that is almost maybe one inch higher than the asphalt. And there's a catch basin that catches most of the storm water.
Okay, Mister, just one more, real quick. Okay, Mister, just one more real quick. I'm sorry, Dennis. Uh, this Mister Harmonis.
Yes, sir.
Yesterday, when I was out there, I didn't see any sign up indicating that there was a hearing um before the zoning board of appeals, you know, you're you're provided with a sign you're supposed to post, you know?
Yes, I believe they posted the sign unless it blew down. But that's how the reason the other gentleman to the north twenty seven twenty uh uh found out about the meeting. So the the poster was up there and maybe it blown blown away. I uh, Mr. Mr. Di Stefano gave me the uh form, I mean, the the sign right when he took my application in and I went to the owner, I said, please put it up even though it's before, but put it up minimum fifteen days before. I drove by it a couple of times. It was on on the front unless it's blown away or somebody took it off. But the adjacent property was well aware of it. That's how they they saw the sign and they wrote the letter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. So does anyone, other board members have any questions for the architect?
I just, I I have one quick question because this goes back to the parking typically when two properties share parking through an easement, you consider the use and the parking needs of both buildings together to confirm that you have enough parking in on the entire site. So my question is, and I I think I know the answer, but you don't know what the parking needs uh per the zoning code are for that neighboring property and how many parking spaces they have on their property, or do you know that?
Well, I know to some extent because I've come and gone over there, except at least, I don't know, fifty times, if not more. And I drove by there because I have other projects in Henrietta that I pass by now. Most of the Fastenal truck, they they deliver most of the products. They have not large trucks, but like medium sized truck with a uh box on the back that they deliver their thing. Very rarely, to be honest with you, last seven, eight months, very rarely I've seen any part cars parked at the front which when they go, people go in. Uh, but there's parking they have at the front is mainly a place that is a national uh uh company. Uh, and they sell uh basically construction building materials. And uh, so not too many people come to that place because most of the items are delivered. You can see the delivery trucks to the south southeast of the uh that their building. Uh, that's where they usually park. And there are some small trucks that they park back there too, but I gather those people are the ones who work in that building.
Uh Andrea, just uh kind of clarify a little bit, um, the Fastenal location. If you were look at the whole thing being retail, it'd be one space for every three hundred gross square feet. However, I think of a a pretty good chunk of that building is storage warehousing type of material. So I I, you know, I don't, I don't want to assume anything here, but my my hunch is that there's ample parking for Fastenal customers in regards to the striped parking spaces that are currently on site.
Okay.
All right. So are there any other questions by board members at this point? We'll obviously discuss this further, but uh any other questions for the architect at this point?
Dennis, uh, this is Ken Gordon. If I could chime in with a couple of questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mister Hormonash, would you please talk a little bit about what your plans are with respect to uh other board applications, including when you plan to be going to the planning board for your approvals there?
Yes, sir. We went to architectural board the first time. They wanted some modification. We made the modification. We met with them. And I got a letter that basically they had approved it with the conditions that all the modification made um be basically acted upon, uh basically. So that's that. Uh, I guess then I'm coming to the zoning board. Then after the zoning board, um, I will pursue to go to the planning board. Um, uh, so that's the uh plan as of now.
Is there a reason why you need zoning board approval before you go to the planning board? Couldn't you go to the planning board and see if they're willing to give you um site plan approval and the conditional use permit that you will need uh before the zoning board takes action on your variance? Isn't that possible?
Yes, sir. That's very possible. That's very possible. Why I can, I, when I spoke with the gentleman named um one of the uh staff at the uh town of Brighton, I, his name is Jeff, I can't remember his last name. Uh, or I cannot, I cannot pronounce it properly, but uh uh that um I was told, okay, go to our, whatever they set me up with, I went to that board. And now.
Uh, well, the choice, the choice is always that of you, the applicant, as to what board you go to and in what order, of course. Um, it just, uh, as Mister Primo was asking questions, it uh was apparent to me that some of his questions really are more of the issues that will be dealt with at the planning board in terms of uh the intensity of the use relative to the conditional use permit. Um, the um orientation of the parking, things like drainage on site, those are all site plan issues. Um, so I it's just, uh, I thought that I I just wanted to hear your thoughts. Certainly something we'll talk about uh with the zoning board when we get into deliberations.
Yes, generally with other towns in Rochester, Greece, uh, uh, Penfield, uh several like gates, generally I've gone to the planning board first. Then I go to the zoning board. Um, I was just trying to expedite as much as possible. If you uh suggest that I go to the uh planning board the schedule at the forums and everything been submitted to the town of Brighton. So I can discuss this issue with uh Mr. Rip this Di Stefano and then scheduled to go to that board and then come back and come to the zoning board. I don't have any issue with that, sir.
All right, yeah, it it just a concern that I have is if the planning board were dissatisfied with the parking layout, for example, and wanted you to move or restructure the parking in some way, you might need a different variance than you're seeking now relative to those parking spaces. And um, that would be uh, that would be a needless um second application uh if we were to take action. Uh, let me just, let me just ask a couple of quick technical questions about the parking itself. Um, so I understand that um, uh, your client believes that it has the right under this easement to park on the north side of the building of twenty seven twenty. Um, do you know whether that right is to park in the orientation as you've drawn it basically in a north-south direction? Uh, or if it's only for certain periods of time to park in a parallel fashion to the building? Do you know if there's any such restriction in the easement?
No, sir. There's no such restriction. It just says, it just refers to parking for this property. Um, uh, and uh, I I believe it gives certain dimensions almost all almost close to the, based on my understanding of the easement is that like as I, as I mentioned, I'm not an attorney, but I, based on my understanding is that almost to the the area, there's certain area that they said you cannot park, like in front of Fastenal to the south of Fastenal, certain places, but this area pretty much, it, my understanding was that I could park in that in that manner. And then also the restaurant who was there, that's I I think that's how they park. Because some of the uh yellow line still remains, you can, most of it faded, but there's here and there you see that you can tell there was a parking line there. So uh, over like five years or whatever, the building has been vacant. Uh, it has uh eroded. Um, the building itself, the structure is very sound. Inside, when you go look at it, it's very sound. It outside is horrid, as far as I'm concerned. Being an architect, it's just very unpleasant looking. It's a sore thumb in that area. Uh, so um, I, we tried to make it so it's 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 at le- at least aesthetically pleasing. It's much more, but it's much better than what we we had. We changed the front facade. Uh, we had put in stucco everywhere at the water table uh up to twenty eighty inches high. So we've done quite a bit of things in order to make a faster build.
I had one other technical question about the parking. Um, I understand that there is parking on the south side of the Fastenal building, uh, which is directly um behind a portion of the parking you are planning on the north side of twenty seven twenty. Can you tell us the distances between those parking spaces at their closest points?
Easily fifty to seventy feet, easily. Uh, when they park up, I I have uh, I haven't measured exactly, but I have a step that every step of mine is about three foot. And it's easily over six, at the closest space is sixty foot. And then as the building, the Fastenal building angles, it's in, it's built in an angle. It's not exactly parallel to the road. At least that's, it appears that way. Uh, so as you go toward the east, that that distance increases.
Okay.
Have you, I I, and and when you say fifty to seventy feet, you're saying from building to building or from parking spot to parking spot?
Uh, basically, uh, the floor of egress and ingress. So it's ample, the, it's pretty wide. It's easily fifty feet clear space between the two parking stalls.
I see. All right. And is this a measurement you took or are you just uh guessing at that?
Yeah, right now, I I did a measurement, but it's not exact measurement, but I know it's it's like usually when I uh don't have the uh laser and everything to check, uh, I step it and then every step of mine is about three foot. So you're easily sixty foot uh clearance.
All right, and only because this part of the public record, Dennis, and I want to make sure the public record is uh complete and clear. I will say that I was, I visited the site today as well. Uh, my observations were that there were absolutely no parking lines that were remaining um on the property, no faded out yellow lines. It's been black topped over. Nothing's left there. And um, you know, I'm sure uh Mister Hermat, Hermanesh's guesses are probably um his best guess, but my best guess would be there was about thirty feet of clearance between the part ends of the parking stalls.
Where the new ones would end to the existing, okay.
Yeah. What I could do, I could ask the surveyor to provide me that dimension because I rather have something exact uh provided by the surveyor. So it's basically, there's no discussion as far as the.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, I I think, Raza, I think that's all good information to take down. So when you make your application to the planning board, you'll be able to answer those questions. That those are important questions for the planning board.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll obviously discuss this further, uh, you know, during the deliberation point. So okay, are there any other board questions or any staff questions? And then we'll move on to the public. Okay, so uh at this point, is there anyone uh on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? Sorry, is there anyone who would like to speak? Oh, hi, Betsy. You got unmute yourself there. You're still muted.
Thanks.
There we go.
There we go.
How are you?
I'm good. I just wasn't able to unmute.
Just identify yourself and your address for the record, please.
Sure, uh, Betsy Bragg, I'm with Woods Obia, uh nineteen hundred Bausch and Long Place. Um, we did send, I did send a letter in. Um, I don't know, am I on here? I think I'm on, yes, okay. Um, I did send a letter in uh on behalf of twenty seven ten West Henryetta Road LLC and uh Randy Schuster, who's the, I believe, trustee um managing that property. Uh, they only found out about this application and this project because they received the legal notice, I believe, from the town. So uh, we didn't have a whole lot of time to evaluate some of the issues, but there are a lot of issues and um a lot of concerns that that property owner has. He absolutely opposes his application and feels it's too intense uh used for this property. Um, I'll kind of summarize, you've had my letter, but I'll just kind of summarize just the, you know, the few things that I um wanted to make sure the board was aware of. Um, so this property owner, my client has reached out to this property once before uh regarding some shared obligations for snow removal. They never responded. Um, they've heard nothing about this project. Nobody has contacted them to ask about it. Um, so they were not asked to provide their consent. They were not informed. There was no discussion of the impact on their property. They do have a tenant Fastenal. It's a uh national company that does operate there. Um, most of their traffic is trucks. They serve the contractor industry, so they have a lot of big trucks that come through there. Um, so uh Mister Schuster was not contacted. He hasn't consented to the application. Um, the legal notices, I think I pointed out there, there were some issues with the uh notice in terms of uh the correctness and advertising the variances. Um, I think Lieutenant did point out that they did make a mistake on the number of parking spaces. There are only forty one spaces shown on the plan. However, only seventeen of those spaces are actually um on their property. And I believe code requires the parking to be on the same pro parcel as the use that it serves, unless I'm mistaken. Uh, so I think there's actually should be a variance for seventeen spaces where fifty five um are required. Uh, the impervious area, it was a little confusing because I looked at the plans and it didn't match up with the legal notice, but I think they're proposing eighty six point five percent lot coverage. Uh, the lot coverage uh or the impervious area of this property is already quite high. This is a non-conforming lot. The code allows sixty five percent lot coverage. This lot has uh eighty three point two percent lot coverage. As you can see, you don't have the site plan up here, but it virtually doesn't have side setbacks. And the uh lot is sixty seven feet in width, I believe, where I think code requires a hundred and fifty feet. So it's a, it's a non-conforming lot, extremely non-conforming already. That said, the buyer bought this property knowing what they were purchasing, knowing the limitations of the property, knowing the conditions of the site, knowing the conditions of the building. This is, in fact, this to me looks like a great opportunity to uh make some significant improvements to a non-conforming lot. And instead, they want to put in a use that is, um, you know, a a highly intense use. Uh, there are other less intense uses that are permitted in in the zoning uh in the zoning code, less intense uses that would require less parking. Essentially, all of the impacts of this proposed grocery store, um, which does have fresh fruit, fruits and vegetables. They have sushi. They have bakery. They have tables to sit down. This is a very intense type of an operation. Um, all of the impacts of this use are going to fall on my client's property, all of them. Um, as far as the easement, um, they're proposed a plan that shows uh about twenty two spaces striped on the north side of their building that are for the most part on my client's property, um, as well as a couple there in the back um shown on this plan. They did not request my client's consent. They have no rights under this easement to construct parking on my client's property. This parking is actually, uh, I'm not disputing that they have a right to a right of way, um, but they don't have the right to obstruct the right of way. And that parking is going to severely impact the um, the right of way that's currently there. Again, my client has big trucks. What's not in my letters today, they had a contractor, they had their contractor go out there and look at what the impact would be uh on the uh traffic circulation on their property. And um, I got a call just before tonight's meeting telling me that their contractor went out there and said, there's no way their large trucks are going to be able to get into their loading uh area in and out of the loading area in the back there. Um, if they have these parking spaces built in the, what is this, this northeast area of the site. Um, so I don't think they had a right to file an application with parking spaces that are not on their property. Um, let's see. I went through, I don't think they meet the criteria for the granting of the area variances. I'm just going to touch on it very briefly. There are a lot of impacts. We're very focused on the parking because obviously they want to build something uh on property that they don't own. Uh, but aside from the parking, you know, parking brings pedestrians. There's no pedestrian amenities here. There's people can be walking through the right of way that's essentially to uh West Henryetta Road. Um, this is a grocery store. There's going to be produce and fish and food. That means a lot of garbage, a lot of dumpsters, garbage trucks, potentially animals. Um, a lot of those types of impacts that I don't, I don't, I think the refuse. Uh, if I see it back there, this isn't the easiest plan to read. Does not look like they have a whole lot of space for for dumpsters and I don't know what their plan is. Um, shopping carts, are we going to have shopping carts uh, you know, all over our property? I think there's a lot of intensity with this operation. Again, the property owner knew what they were doing when they bought this property. They knew the limitations. Uh, I believe in the past, when an applicant's come in for a impervious surface Uh, I believe in the past, when an applicant's come in for a impervious surface variance of this, you know, with property that has substantial uh, coverage over the sixty five percent. They are usually making improvements that while needing a variance are reducing the lot coverage and reducing the amount of impervious area and making it, you know, improvements to that condition. This is just such a highly non-conforming lot as it currently is. They're just packing something that's too intense into into the property. Um, I know a lot of the questions that came up touched on some of the site plan things, so I won't get too much into it. Um, you know, I have to ask, wonder about things like, you know, there're going to be all these new cars out here, grocery stores are busy places. Yes, there's, there's cars that come on there um, onto the property now, but you know, what does this site have as far as water quality? Where's all the crud going to go? And I, I, you know, there's just a lot of site plan related um, concerns. But my client's biggest concern, of course, is that they're proposing to make improvements uh, on property that is going to um, you know, directly impact their tenant. The uh, you know, it was mentioned that there was a sit-down restaurant here. I think this building originally was a warehouse and then it was the uh, Japanese steakhouse. I believe when this easement was originally written, it did contemplate this as a restaurant. Um, a restaurant use had different peak times than a daytime business operation. It wasn't fast and all, but essentially there was, you know, kind of offset um, peak times and things like that. And um, you know, a grocery store is a seven day a week operation, daytime hours plus. Fast now is primarily a daytime operation. Uh, this just is not a compatible neighbor uh, to their operation. And what's proposed here is going to directly impact and adversely affect Fastenal's current operation and use of the property. I think I've kind of summarized, um,
Okay.
You know, what we've got, so, yeah. If you have any questions, so I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I think that's good, Betsy. Okay.
I can't, I can't, I can't see if you can see me. I just see a plan in the, see your face in the corner.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we're good is uh, at this point. Uh, is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, so at this point then, the public hearing is closed and we'll move on to the next application, please.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Application five A O three twenty-two, applications fidelity investments LLC, Lee C. and Daniele Family Companies owner of property located at twenty seven fifty Monroe Avenue for sign variance in section two oh seven dash thirty-two B one. Glow for a sign on a second building face. We're not allowed by code. I'll scrub the application plans on that.
Of the record, before we get started, just for purposes of the record, I, this is member McKay Drury. I'm gonna um, recuse myself from this one, so I will turn off my video.
Okay, very good. Okay, and who do we have speaking uh, for fidelity?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Charlie Shaliel with Site Enhancement Services.
Okay, Charlie, what's, can you give us an address for the record, please?
Sure, it's six zero zero one Nymphs Parkway South Bend, Indiana.
Okay, wonderful. Go right ahead.
First off, thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. Um, we're here. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background on the project and the property and the client in general, uh, Fidelity Investments is currently located in the Pittsburgh Plaza. Uh, in Rochester, we're actually moving to this new location. Uh, Fidelity is excited about it, gives them an opportunity to to uh, get a little bit more space. Um, there's going to be thirteen guidance offices. Um, there's going to be uh, twenty to thirty employees that actually work here um, on a, on a rotating in and out basis, then just based on the new COVID rules and and the the new society we live in. Uh, but a new investor center for fidelity. Um, the space is actually going to take up three storefronts. Uh, so it's an, actually, it's a rather large space, um, which is exciting. Um, what we're looking for is uh, right now, the code allows for the single sign because we're not a corner lot. We are a corner tenant space, but we're not a corner lot. Um, one sign at ten percent of the elevation up to a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, what we're actually proposing is uh, the one sign on the front of the building, um, does not require a variance, obviously, but that one um, we're, we have drawn up at a hundred and four square feet. What we're asking to do is use some of the remaining square footage, the, with the remaining code allowed square footage and actually put a sign on the side of the building um, that would face towards the uh, the new Whole Foods, but then also has a really nice window of visibility to the motors as they exit the highway. Um, and then also traveling east on uh, Monroe Ave. Um, and actually, this, this picture somewhat right here tells a story. Um, you can see that white elevation um, is actually the tenant space before it got the brick on it. Um, it would be a second sign on that side where you see the, the three little columns that are actually window based. Uh, it's a small sign. It's internally illuminated. Um, it will have zero impact on any residentially zoned property. Um, again, we're not asking for additional square footage. Um, it's just the ability to use some of our square footage in a different manner. Um, it's not atypical to the area. If you're familiar with the Starbucks, Starbucks has a sign on every single elevation, which I mean, it's a very visible sight, so it makes a lot of sense. Um, there's other businesses up and down Monroe Ave that, you know, have a similar situation and and they've got a sign on a, of the side of the building, so it makes sense. Um, the main audience again is going to be people exiting the highway, people on Monroe Ave, and then obviously people in the uh, the shopping center itself um, in the uh, Whole Foods area. It's important to note, I think, that fidelity will not be on any sort of multi-tenant freestanding sign as um, you know, there's just not an allocated spot for fidelity to be uh, present. So the facade visibility and and signage is is really key to letting people know where we are. Um, again, the architecture for this property itself and or the building, I should say, is unique on the fact that it varies, um, and brings a lot of visual interest. And the signage that we're asking for at this property will just help to accent that architecture. I appreciate the time. If there's any questions, I, it's just, you know, the, it's one of those things that as we move into a new site, as we move into a new location, obviously signage and branding is important, but we try to be extremely respectful. That's why we didn't want to just put a hundred and fif- hundred and fifty square feet on the main elevation. It just wouldn't make sense. It it's not appropriate. It doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood and and we think that the second sign, the smaller sign that we're asking for on the side of the building will really help accent the property and and I guess fit into the commercial integrity and of the corridor. So, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Just quickly, um, just one thing, and then we can see what the other board members have to say. Uh, what would you, you alluded to the change in business, which we all are certainly party to, given what's gone on in the last few years. But what would the expected, you know, traffic coming into this business, not the employees that are working there static, but uh, what, what kind of expectation would fidelity have, or do they have at Betsor Plaza for foot traffic?
Yeah, and I think a lot of that depends on time of year. Obviously, tax season is uh, you know, a big one. Uh, end of the year is a large one with, you know, holiday money transfer and what have you, but um, I, it it all depends, I eat on a, a day-to-day basis, but uh, foot traffic, there's a lot of walk-in traffic. And when I say a lot, um, you know, just working with fidelity throughout the years, I've, I've been on you know, working on their projects for sixteen plus years. Um, you're usually looking at four to five customers in there at a time, you know, couple meetings. Um, within the center, there is going to be some dedicated parking for fidelity-only customers, but it's not a major, it's not a restaurant. It's not a high-intensity use. Um, it's, it's, it's really, how do I say this? It's really subdued customer traffic, but at the same time, um, it's planned for, it's accommodated. Uh, and especially within the center, there's ample parking for at least, you know, what we anticipate our client traffic to be.
Okay, very good. Okay, other questions by the board, please?
Uh, just before we go on, can I ask Brendan, can you uh, scroll down to the sign elevations? So we can get that sign, keep going. Uh, one more. This would be the one for the variance request right here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that's a, it's a thirty-six inch, so if you look down at the bottom, um, uh, picture, excuse me, it's a thirty-six inch crest, which uh, alludes to a twenty-four inch F in fidelity. Um, and it's forty-six square feet.
Okay.
This is member Wright. I apologize if you've mentioned this, but I know you included in the packet there several buildings along Monroe Avenue in that same area that also have two uh, signs on two sides of the building.
Yeah, so I'm just looking up and down, and of course I have that piece of paper, um, just looking up and down the quarter. Um, I know that the uh, mattress location, now granted, it's a, it's a corner property. And and ours is a little unique because we're an inline tenant and end tenant. Um, so we are a corner tenant, not necessarily a corner property. Uh, the city mattress has two signs. There's a uh, Sakura Home uh, has two signs, Vitamin Shop. Um, Adelita, and again, I can't speak necessarily to the jurisdiction of um, the Vitamin Shop, the Adelitas, or the Rochester Athletic Club, but a similar type situation with tenants that have appropriate signage based on, you know, viewing corridors and and secondary elevations.
Uh, member Schwartz, I just want to say that Sakura and Red Sun are two separate businesses in the same building. So they do need two signs to differentiate between the two. And personally, I think um, the mattress store is quite different. Um, because as you are coming off the expressway, that sign really does show. Are you referring to that same ramp for your customers to be coming off and trying to see your sign?
So, right, as you actually come off the ramp and as you get to the intersection at Monroe, um, you've got a really nice shot of the side of the side of the building. Um, so yeah, that is an aspect of the traffic that we're looking to, you know, have exposure to.
Okay, but in in, in all honesty, your building is positioned quite differently than than the mattress store. Your front sign, the sign you're allowed, will be front and center as you come off of the expressway. Especially, you know, with your turning right to go east onto Monroe Avenue. Um, and the other two things is when I was looking at it, the two signs are almost going to be you know, almost touching one another because of where they're located and that is not that big an area for the two signs. What other reasons were there for you um, to come to this conclusion?
Well, I mean, so a couple of things. Um, first off, I'm, I will not sit here and argue the uh, the, the mattress is uh, definitely has, you know, different viewing corridors and and accents that absolutely does. You're a hundred percent correct. Um, I think the consideration for the side wall sign also has to do with the tenant that the side of our building faces. Um, you know, the Whole Foods is obviously a uh, major draw. Um, and just to have subtle exposure to the patrons going in and out of um, the uh, that shopping facility, I I think is huge. Um, again, it's not something that is intended to I guess overly impact um, the off-site environment. Uh, it's more meant to architect or uh, accent the architecture and to um, show, you know, to the motors traveling east on Monroe and or into the uh, the Whole Foods. And and again, I'm the ramp at the the five ninety, yes, there is a front wall sign in the building at, um, the way that the building faces, it's, it's not a direct on angle and there's some vegetation along the street. Um, that, you know, I think needs some consideration, but that side wall sign, um, you know, driving up and down that viewing corridor is going to have some exposure and it's exposure that we're looking for.
When you mentioned the Whole Foods, it came to mind that in a way you're using that then as an advertisement for people in Whole Foods to know that that's fidelity more than, you know, a wayfinding sign if you're on the road.
It, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue that we definitely want exposure to the, to the uh, to, to the people within Whole Foods and I think that you know, the fact that this is, it's within the square footage of the overall allotment of the, the facility itself. You know, we try to be cognizant of the, the size and the impact that we're looking for. Um, but breaking it up onto a secondary elevation, you know, for this type of center um, appears to be appropriate. I mean, Starbucks being a pad site at the front of the property has four signs. They've got a sign on every single elevation, which makes sense. It's a commercial environment, it's zone commercial, it's a commercial uh, corridor. And, you know, the signage that we're asking for isn't, it it's not um, overly sized or or intended to be, um, to your point in, in advertisement, it's intended to be uh, a wayfinding and notification tool. So it's, it it's subdued it, and it's in line with what you would expect to see and our clients would expect to see in in this type of environment.
Okay. Uh, other questions by the board this time? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes. Yes.
Dennis, if I could ask a couple of questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, can, speak up there, Ken. Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Shaliel, Ken Gordon, attorney for the town. Why this size sign? Why forty-six square feet? Why could you not live with something smaller?
I, I'm not saying we necessarily could. Um, I think in my communication with staff and my communication with the property ownership, um, we tried to be very sensitive to the size of the front wall sign. I mean, a- again, um, ten percent of the front elevation is actually, the front elevation that fidelity has is three thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. Ten percent of that is, uh, obviously, it's a three hundred and fifteen square feet. Mac, code max is out at a hundred and fifty. We don't need a hundred and fifty square foot sign on the front of the building. It would be absolutely obnoxious. It wouldn't be appropriate. Um, and it's not, I don't think it would be uh, us being a good partner with the community. So what we did is we, we appropriately sized the sign on the front of the building and then used the remaining uh, square footage on the side of the building. I mean, if if the, if the board wants that sign slightly smaller, I I don't see why it couldn't be slightly smaller. Uh, instead of a thirty-six, you know, we could go to a thirty-three. The size of the sign is less important than the impact of the site. It, the impact that the sign will have, if that makes sense.
The reason I ask is one of our standards is if a variance is granted, it should be granted to the minimally necessary uh, size or uh, variance that um, would allow you to still have the benefit that you're seeking. So I guess that's my question. What's, what's the, what's the smallest size sign on that side of the building that would still achieve the benefit you're seeking to get?
Well, um, so two things to that. We try to keep with a minimal request and what, that's why we took this. That's why basically this is only one variance instead of asking for additional square footage, if that makes sense. Um, so that's one of the things, but honestly, um, you know, we're showing a thirty-six inch sign here. I, I, I say we could probably get away with a twenty-seven inch crest, which is twenty-six square feet. So it's dramatically smaller. It's approximately ten inches smaller, but it still gives us the identification of the Whole Foods. Uh, the Whole Foods and and.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Daniele. Yeah, I saw your hand up there and I, I.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll take that in a moment. Yep.
Well, uh, Mr. Daniele is one of the applicants, so.
Yes, yes, I understand.
Yeah, uh, can, just go a little bit on what Ken just was talking about, Charlie, is do you feel that this sign is in proper scale with that side of the, that elevation?
I, I think the one that we've asked for absolutely is. I think if we go smaller, it's actually gonna look too small. Uh, the, the elevation and the way that we sized it out. Um, I mean, if you, if you flip to the previous page, you'll see the size of the front wall sign and how it fits within the, the span of the brick area. Um, and it really highlights the architecture above the entry feature. This sign, we try to be in balance. If you look at the edge of the crest versus the edge of the Y and the uh, and the window lines, we tried to, we tried to stay centered in that and be balanced on those window lines and really highlight that elevation and be balanced. If we go smaller, I, I honestly think it's going to look too small, but at the same time, you know, the impact of the side wall sign is, is definitely something that we're looking for.
And you said um, that it's going to be internally lit. Um, it might be in your materials. I missed it. If it is, um, could you just talk a little bit more about um, what that internal lighting is going to be? Um, night sky compliant, uh, is it uh, you know, bright glowing sign that we're going to be able to see from twelve corners? You know, what?
No, no, absolutely. And there's, and there's a really um, subtle uh, uh, description on the page that you see there. Um, so the only thing that illuminates is the crest and the, the lettering itself. They're all individually illuminated, channel letters with LED. Um, to speak to your point in regards to, you know, are you going to see it from far away? Fidelity, um, so I've got a lot of clients and they do a lot of business and um, the typical is a thin piece of quarter inch acrylic is a front, um, front face for a channel letter. These are actually three-quarter inch um, thick acrylic uh, with a vinyl over the face to to obviously have it illuminate white. What that does is it, it subdues the over, uh, the impact of the illumination, I should say. So it's a, it's a soft but very crisp look on the illumination. Um, it's, it's uh, LED illuminated, so it's all controlled. Um, it will be absolutely compliant with Um, it will be absolutely compliant with the uh, regulations of the illumination standards of the code. Um, and it'll match what you're gonna see in the rest of the center.
Okay.
Last question. Um, I heard you say that there is no room on a Plaza Monument sign for Fidelity. Is that something that Fidelity asked for and was told there was not room? And maybe that's a question more for Mr. Daniele than Mr. Shaliol. I I don't know.
So, and then Mr. Daniel, if he wants to answer, um, my understanding is that the only freestanding sign that is um. Going to be at the site is actually for the Whole Foods itself. So there's not an opportunity for a multi-tenant scenario for Fidelity to be a part of.
Thank you. So this is Danny Daniele, uh, owning the property, uh, with the applicant. So, can you hear me okay?
Speak up a little, please.
Lean lean in.
Oh, maybe the whole, has this a little better?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, so uh, the Whole Foods monument is a single monument and we're only allowed by code by our approvals to have one sign on there and it's the Whole Foods sign. When we uh, were working with Fidelity to take the space, they did request space on the monuments. And it was made clear that we we wouldn't have any available. Uh, we did tell them that. Because they're taking up four spaces within the plaza that we typically would have put four separate tenants. That would have had the opportunity to put up four separate signs up to a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, that you may have a good chance of going in front of the zoning board. And pleading your case of rather than putting up over five hundred square feet of signage that we're allowed to, based on our previous approvals. Rather than putting five hundred feet, maybe you can put two smaller signs and I'm not sure what the total comes up to with the two sides. I don't know if you guys have that number.
Hundred and fifty.
So it's a hundred and fifty. So he's got basically one sign on there and to give some color to the uh, the entire. That building, that that building was designed for fourteen tenants. And I know that the uh, the group funded by Wegmans wants to make sure everyone thinks that there's gonna be fourteen tenants in there. The reality is we're only gonna have eight tenants. And that means that there's gonna be uh, six signs that are not gonna go up. So six times one fifty, do the math, it's almost seven hundred feet plus. It's not going to go up. So by allowing them to have these two smaller signs continuing to go up to one fifty. The whole site is still gonna have less than six hundred square feet of what we were originally approved for. Um, so I think it's a pretty big deal and I I think when you ask the question of how much smaller can they make the sign? Obviously, it's subjective, you know, you can make it the size of a dollhouse if you really want to, but the purpose of a sign is so that the average individual can see it from their vehicle. Driving for way signing, wayfinding, et cetera. And uh, we did work with them a little bit and, you know, when you're working with uh. Photoshop, if you will, you can expand and contract the sign and the signage that they came up with. Uh, not only did it stay within a hundred and fifty feet, uh, but it it looked proper with the architecture. And it seems like we'll be able to get a decent visual read from the roadway on Monroe Avenue. Uh, as well as coming out from Whole Foods. So we 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 felt that it's a significant fair ask. Uh, for the applicant, for the tenant, to be able to have, rather than one big ridiculous sign of one fifty, two smaller ones. And with the architecture of that building being on the corner, it really does fit nicely.
One other, just follow up, Mr. Daniele, what what we were discussing, the type of signage. Is is this your intention then with the rest of the plaza that would mimic the style of the signs that? Are proposed to your five fidelity for that building?
Uh, I can't speak to that right now. Uh, i- it's not gonna be the typical cookie cutter plaza where every sign looks the same. The idea was to make this uh, more of a, you know, uh, uh, some people may laugh at it, but my vision was to have a smaller town feel within that. And if you look at the architecture and as you can see it being built today, uh, every storefront has a different look to it. Has different textures, has different masonry, has different shades of color, so that every tenant can kind of stand on their own. Rather than that typical prototypical, you know, strip center where you've just got, you know, seven red signs in a row with just different names on it. Uh, we believe that that kind of cheapened the area.
Okay, so I guess I wasn't driving it necessarily only the color, but how about the style, the back with, you know, signs? This style, is that what your intention is to have that sort of style? Not necessarily?
I believe they will be similar to that, but again, I can't talk to the ones that have not put them in yet. Uh, they're all different companies that have different styles, but I can tell you that every style that's gonna be applied for will be allowed by code as far as what they're asking for that. And there's not gonna be exposed neon uh, and crazy signs of that nature, if that's what you're looking to.
Okay, good. Okay, is there uh, any other question for the applicants at this point? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, if there is none, then the public hearing is closed. And Rick, you can move on.
Application five A O four twenty-two, application Ari and Victoria Chodas, owners of property located at thirty-five White Stone Lane. For area variance in section two oh five dash two to one, allow building addition to extend ten point four feet into the existing fifty-three. Point nine foot rear setback or sixty foot rear setback as required by code. And two, allow livable floor area. After construction of of an addition to increase from five thousand two hundred eighty-one square feet to five thousand nine hundred. Twenty-six square feet or a maximum four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet is allowed by code. Also, Sky and application plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Uh, that'd be me, Clint Batista, architect, twenty-three, West Side Drive in North Carolina.
Okay, great. Go right ahead.
Uh, my client uh, originally looked at doing a second floor bedroom addition last year. That was approved. Um, but when they went to do the walkthroughs with the contractor, they expressed concerns about relocating. Or rerouting um, equipment for the pool room. Um, so instead of doing that, we investigated doing this um, rear addition for a bedroom. Um, the size was dictated by the current master bedroom that's on the second floor. Uh, they're moving the master bedroom down. To be in this space, so um, we're trying to provide the same amenities that they had on their second floor. In this back addition, so there's a bathroom, a walk-in closet, a hallway to get to the bedroom. So that dictated the size. Um, and the placement, the only place we can really put that. Um, and easily connect to the existing utilities in the basement is behind the existing family room, which is shown on. The uh, exterior elevations, we're basically just extending that back wall out. So the roofline and everything matches what's there now. The, I think the the bedroom itself is about three hundred square feet. The remainder is the the walk-in closet, hallway and bathroom. Um, the look of the addition will match the house. Um, there's large shrubs and trees. On the rear and side property line, so really you can't see this if you're in a neighboring property or from the street. Um, so I think the impact is minimal. Um, I know there's houses in the area that are much larger than this. Um, so I, I know that we're asking for more than what's allowed, but we're in a neighborhood where the, that's kind of the typical house layout. Um, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer or defer. Um, my client's also on the line in case there's things that I can't answer.
Okay, very good. Okay, or questions by the board, please?
Number Schwartz, yes, well, I believe it's a magnolia tree in the back. Will that be able to be kept?
Sure will. We're not touching that.
Okay, ma'am, excuse me, can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Excuse me, my name is Victoria Chodos. I'm the homeowner at thirty-five White Stone Lane in Brighton.
Thank you.
And my second question is, it looks as if this will be coming out sort of being even with the extension of the pool. They'll, okay, thank you.
Correct, yes.
Okay, further questions? Nothing?
Okay, uh, just for the record.
Yes, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, could you just tell us what your um, building lot cover is going to be with the addition?
Um. Hold on a second, I might have that on my drawing.
Think it is on your drawing. I just wanted to state it for the record.
So there's a twenty percent maximum lot coverage allowed by code and with this addition. And what's existing on the site will be at nineteen point three, which is under that allowable twenty percent.
Hey, very good. Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application five A O five twenty-two, application Randall Peacock, architect. And Deborah Rogers, owner of property located at twenty-four Hemingway Drive. For one, an area variance in section two oh five dash two to allow a garage expansion to extend six point seven feet. Into the existing eleven point seven foot side setback or thirteen point two seven foot side setback is required by code. Two, an area variance in section two oh five dash two to all building addition to extend fifteen plus or minus feet. Into the existing fifty-five foot rear setback or sixty foot rear setback is required by code. And three, an area variance in section two oh seven dash ten E to allow a driveway expansion up to the side lot line. Or a minimum four foot uh, setback is required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking, please?
It's Randall Peacock.
Mr. Peacock, good evening.
Well, um, thank you for hearing this this evening. Um.
Your address, sir, for the record, please?
Five four five Spring Meadow Lane, Webster, New York.
Oh, come on now, you're, you've been giving us a lot of applications, sir. Okay, go ahead.
Um, my client came to me uh, with uh, a request to do two additions to her house. Um, one is a garage addition and the other is a living space addition on the rear of the house. Uh, it, one of the first things that noticed with this property is it's somewhat unusual in terms of the way the zoning line is drawn. Um, this parcel is in the R L A district. Uh, almost every other parcel on Hemingway is in, is in the B district. Um, strangely enough, the the A district follows along Highland Avenue. And in most instances, all of the side streets, it takes the uh, encompasses the first. Residential parcel on the side street or the corner property, uh, but then the next parcel behind that goes into the B district. For some odd reason, this is the one outstanding lot where the, they included the second parcel into the A district. Um, and thus, we have some more stringent setback requirements than uh, neighbors around us. Uh, I'll give you a little history. These houses were built in the mid-fifties. Uh, Hemingway Drive is almost all identical houses. Not, they do not have basements. They're all slab on grade structures. And uh, that limits the amount of storage uh, available in the house. Uh, my client currently uh, has to store some of her yard equipment or lawnmower, et cetera, behind the garage under the uh. Spacious overhangs on the house. Um, but she would like to be able to incorporate more storage in the house by expanding the garage. Uh, we're proposing to go out to a five foot setback distance. Um, which is approximately six point seven foot increase in the garage. The five foot is the minimum where we uh, do not have to provide uh, fire protection or uh, fire resistance rating to the exterior wall of the house. And uh, we believe that that uh, will solve her uh, concerns and provide enough additional storage for. Uh, outdoor yard equipment. She likes to garden, so there's gardening equipment, there's lawnmower, uh, bicycles, et cetera, that will go in there. Um, on the rear of the house, uh, she's uh, anticipating a possible uh, lifestyle or life change. Uh, by uh, marrying and um, she would like to add some living space to the house. Uh, if this property were in the R L B district, I wouldn't be talking to you about a rear yard setback. Um, we are maintaining forty feet off of the rear line, which is the right step the neighbors have. Uh, and uh, she's unfortunately required to be sixty feet off. Uh, the existing house already encroaches over. Um, the rear uh, setback of sixty feet. Uh, and as I mentioned, we'd be maintaining that for the forty foot ma- uh, setback that would be required if the house were actually in the R L B district. Where it should be. Uh, there, there are some unique aspects to the lot. It's a pie-shaped lot. Um, the house is set a bit, uh, house sits a bit skew on that pie-shaped lot. So there's no uh, regular rhythm of side yard setbacks and and front yard or front. Alignment of the house bases uh, along this property. Um, the, the neighbor's house, I've shown you the outline of the neighbor's house on the site plan. Um, we're still uh. Give you a, a distance there, um, then, then bear with me just one moment. Then the nearest corner of the neighbor's house is approximately eleven and a half feet off of the property line. Um, and there would still be uh, about eighteen feet between the two houses at the corner of the expanded garage. The uh, one other thing I'd like to mention, and this is just always a pet peeve of mine. I noticed um, in the process of these drawings that Ms. Rogers had uh, had her driveway repaved. Uh, apparently she hired a contractor to come in. They told her that there was not a permit required to pave the driveway. And they widened the driveway to the current uh, size shown on the, on my uh, site plan. Um, it, once again, I really wish we had licensing of contractors in New York State that would allow it to control issues such as this, or at least uh, seek out the guilty parties. Um, Ms. Rogers was not aware that uh, there was a setback requirement for the driveway nor that there was a. Um, a, a building permit requirement for widening the driveway. Uh, the driveway was widened by about six and a half feet. Um, it uh, runs perpendicular to the house, so it goes out and at, at the house, it's five feet off at the street line. It's about uh, uh, right on the property line. Um, and we, I advised her to correct that. In the process of this, this hearing as well to seek the variance to legalize the driveway. Uh, I know she has spoken with a neighbor, I believe there was a letter provided by the neighbor uh, stating their, their. Uh, agreement with the request that she's uh, uh, making this evening. Uh, I forwarded that to Rick earlier uh, in the week. Um. I think that kind of covers the unique nature of the property, um, the unique nature of the zoning issues. Uh, the minimum uh, required or minimum variance necessary in terms of uh, maintaining our five foot setback. Well, I should also mention, um, the, the actual required setback is thirteen point two seven feet. Um, on the opposite side of the house, we already have fifteen point two feet. That gives us twenty point two out of the um, the required twenty-six five roughly. Uh, so uh, there is still some space uh, around the house, uh, so that it does not make it look crowded. Um, in terms of building area, uh, it's a point three one acre site, thirteen thousand five hundred and four square feet. Uh, the current lot coverage is fourteen point two percent or one thousand nine hundred and nineteen square feet. With the additions, we would take us to two thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet of cover or eighteen percent of the lot. Uh, so we're still far below what the maximum lot coverage would be permitted. Uh, and uh, we're also well within the uh, livable floor area of the house. The allowed livable floor area would be two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight square feet and we are proposing one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet for the house.
Okay.
I, I think I touched on all my points and hopefully I can answer your questions.
Okay, very good. Okay, so questions by the board, please?
This is member Wright, just to confirm, the expanded garage is still not even a two-car garage, is that right? It's a, like a car and a half and is that extra just for storage?
Yes, yeah. Um, we are widening the overhead door slightly. Um, currently, we have a overhead door. I don't know. Well, probably you live in Brighton, probably a lot of you have eight-foot overhead doors. They're a squeeze with modern cars. Um, we are gonna widen the door, twelve-foot door, uh, but it's still, it doesn't give you two, two inside parking spaces. Just one space and and access to get around the car.
And then I actually had just a couple of questions for Rick, um, or just one. Any ideas? I I was sort of struck by this, the drawing of the zones between um. R L A and R L B here. Any ideas why this property was included?
No, I do not know why.
It's like a ger- gerrymandering map of DC.
Almost, almost.
Heard maybe of the, the czar's bump in the railroad, the, the, yeah, there was an argument, they're building a railroad. It was all going all over the place and the czar put a ruler on the map and said, no, it goes like this. And but it was over and it made a little bump. I, this could be a czar's bump.
Good, good as theory is any.
Randy, Randy, I just have one question in regards to the garage expansion. That the measurement is taken from, is there an overhang on that side that's going to extend or or no?
I, what I'm doing is looking at extruding the house, so the the overhang would come out into that as well. Into that five foot, yeah.
So your, so your actual request is going to be even less than the five feet? Because we do take it when you're, when you're going for a a. Variance into a setback, we do take it at the closest point. That includes overhangs.
Of the overhang. Well, then, yeah, I would like to match that. It takes us out to two and a half feet closer.
And that won't, that won't incur any building code issues?
No, the, the, even if it did, I, it's very difficult to use a fire rated gypsum panel on the underside of the overhang. But I don't believe that that causes us any issue. I just want to avoid having to fire. Self, that's, I mean, it's it's done pretty regularly. It's just, I didn't think it'd be good to go to that extent here.
So if I got this right, your request actually is for the extension to go five feet with an overhang of two point five feet, correct?
Yeah, yeah, as shown on the.
Brendan, could you just scroll up one, just so that we get an overall look? And then can you just blow that up a little bit? Oh, you're right there. Just can you blow that up a little bit? Yeah, so that corner, that's what we're basically talking about.
Yeah, right, that's corner.
That's going to be two point five feet from the line. And then it's going to go get larger as it goes to the back, correct?
Seven and a half feet at the rear corner of that.
Okay.
Including that overhang or not including that?
No, it would be seven and a half feet to the building minus the two and a half for the overhang.
Okay, other questions for the applicant? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Randy. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Rick?
Application five A O seven twenty-two, application William Fox and Kristy Elise Fox. Owners of property located at one eleven Brightwood Lane for an area variance from section two oh seven dash ten E five. To allow front yard pavement after a driveway expansion to be thirty-five point eight percent of the front yard area. In lieu of the maximum thirty percent allowed by code, I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, very good. Who do we have speaking, please?
Kristy Alessi Fox, the homeowner at one eleven Brightwoods Lane.
Okay, Ms. Fox, please proceed.
So we are requesting variance to widen our driveway. On the east side of the driveway, what we want to expand to by about one foot, twelve inches to the edge of the foundation. Of the existing garage. And then on the west side of the driveway, we want to expand by five feet for a total of seventeen feet wide. So that we can fit two cars side by side in the driveway.
Okay. Could you talk about the neighborhood you live in and what what other conditions are in the neighborhood around you?
Sure. So right now, our driveways obviously fits single cars in a row. There are several driveways in our neighborhood next door to us, across the street from us, that have. Cars that are are driveways that will fit two cars side by side. There are multiple homes in the neighborhood that have single car garages that have done this, that have widened. Anywhere from seventeen feet to twenty feet wide. So we, we feel that it's compatible with the existing driveways in the neighborhood. And that, yeah, that's about it.
Okay, very good. Questions by the board members?
Yeah, this is member McKay Drury. I see the references to the existing walkway. So that is on the west side of the existing driveway, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. It's not shown on the survey map, but yes, there's a walkway and a front stoop in front of the front door.
Okay, and what material is that as it exists now?
Cement.
Okay.
And then my only other question was in regards to the final page that you. Have included in your application materials. I was just wondering if you could. Clarify the neighbors that you're talking about that have the two car wide drives. Is it number one seventeen located next to you that has that?
I believe, I believe that is her house number, yes.
And then across the street from you would be one ten?
Oh, I think so. Yeah, I can go look, but yes, I believe that is, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm just looking at the, if we could actually go one or a couple pages further through the application, so.
The tax map, you want to look?
Yeah, that's the one that I'm referring to.
Okay. Think it's at the end.
Yeah, one more.
It might not be on that, the application that's online.
Yeah, that's all, okay. Oh, yeah, when you attach them, Rick, yeah.
Right, right, that was something I attached.
Oh, okay, all right. So for purposes of the record, I'm looking at the tax map and. It's showing that the neighbor to the east is number one seventeen. And the neighbor across the street to the south is number one ten.
That sounds fairly accurate.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to ask any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding application five A O seven? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application five A O eight twenty-two, application Neil and Laura Frode. Owners of property located at fifteen seventy-five Highland Avenue for an area variance from section two oh three dash two point one B two and two oh three dash ninety-four. To allow pool house to be five hundred and twenty-seven square feet in size in lieu of the maximum two hundred and fifty square feet allowed by code. I'll describe it on application plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
My name is Neil Frode, co-applicant along with my wife Laura Frode, and we both live at fifteen seventy-five Highland Avenue.
Okay, great, go right ahead.
Okay, so we bought our current property about six years ago and our, our plan always, since the time we purchased it, was to put a pool. We have two boys, now six and eight year old, who love swimming, so we wanted to have a pool on the property. And our original intent was to have that pool located on the part of our property that's in the city of Rochester. Prior to, I guess in the planning stage, we uncovered the fact that some of our soil at that part of the property. Was the old fill that they would bring in and it was recommended by a geological engineer that we not have the pool there. So we are very fortunate that we have an ample backyard, which is all in the town of Brighton. And so we made the decision to try to locate the pool down into the back part of our property. But it increases the distance from the house and elevation wise, it's a pretty good hill to walk down there. So our hope was in having the pool that we could have a place where our family could hang out and enjoy the pool that would allow us to have some food down there, some shelter if a rain came in the summertime. You know, such brief summers in Rochester, we got to get every bit of enjoyment we can. Store some pool equipment down there and also to have a bathroom where if we needed to run and use the bathroom, that we didn't have to trudge up to the the bottom layer of Cobb's Hill to do so. So the the pool house that we're applying for the variance in order to get those requirements into the pool house, it ended up coming up to the five hundred and twenty-seven square feet that you see in the application. And that allowed us to get each of the components that we were looking to accomplish. In terms of the neighborhood and the location, the plan is that the pool house would mimic the architecture of our house. We would have board and bat and siding and some stone veneer that would batch existing work on our house. And the location of the pool house, where it is in our backyard, there's a natural alcove that the hill of our property creates. So it's really that visible from the neighboring properties and sits so far back, it's not visible from the road as well.
Mr. Frode, can you summarize maybe in a little better detail than how you got the five hundred and twenty-seven square feet or in excess of what the code? What, what is in there that has caused that? Because I understand.
Yeah, so. Yep, so we, we asked our architect to design a building that had a bathroom facility. A laundry room facility, an area for sitting to watch some TV. An area that was covered that would allow us to have a table to sit eight people at. An area that would allow a kind of a bar like setting and then an area that would allow some kitchen space. And when all of those requirements were put into the, to the design, that's what led to the, to the actual square footage that we are applying for.
Now, is, is there intention to have anyone staying in that facility? Like people coming over for the weekend or the evening or whatever in that?
No, we have a, we have ample space in our house for overnight guests and we have a guest suite in the house, so there's no intention to use it that way. It's absolutely designed to be a seasonal property or seasonal use structure. So the intent is just to create a spot that we can enjoy our time by the pool and not have to be running back and forth to the, to the house.
How is it going to be heated in any way?
There, there's no, nothing in the plans for heating. They, I think there is insulation that they have to put in, but my understanding was that that was just due to basic code requirements. But there's no plans to have it heated.
Okay.
Take back, I think, I think in the, on the concrete slab, they've got some floor heating in there. But it's not designed to be heated for use during the winter time. I think it was just to make the slab warmer in the, in the cooler evenings that could be there in the late summer.
Okay, other questions by the board members, please? Anything? Okay, very good. All right, I appreciate your information. And at this point, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Application five A O nine twenty-two, application John D'Angelo Agent and Elliot Foo, owner of property located thirty Indian Springs Lane for an area variance from section. Two oh three dash two point one B six to allow standby emergency generator to be located in the side yard and move the rear yard behind the house as required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
My name is John D'Angelo. I'm with Isaac Heating and Air Conditioning at fifty Hollander Park in Rochester, New York. I, I am the applicant for a automatic standby generator for Mr. and Mrs. Foo at thirty Indian Springs Lane. First, I want to just say thank you guys for taking the time to review the request. Also, this is my first time ever doing this, so please bear with me along the way. We are requesting to put an automatic natural gas generator on the side yard of the home. The way the home was built and the way the backyard landscaping was done, there was no location for the generator that wouldn't be in front of a window. On the side of the house that we're proposing, if you're looking at that site map, right at that property line. There are some large arborvities that are there, I would say approximately twenty feet tall. The client also has landscaping going along that side of the home, so from the front of the road. It hides the look of that generator as well. The unit is going to be close to the house, which would be nice. It's not going to be out in the yard. Let's see, the decibel rating is sixty-seven decibels. The unit would only operate during a power outage. If the client was to lose power from a storm or any type of outage, this system comes on as a backup. Electric source for them to heat and heat their home and keep their, their stuff in there going. I hope that's what you guys were looking for. If you have any questions, please, I'm happy to help any way I can.
All right, very good. Questions? Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. D'Angelo, the, the arborvities. Are those on your client's property or those on the next property?
Um, I can't tell you that for certain. If you, I'm going to pull up a picture of it on my end. But I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure what property line. My apologies for that. I should have been more prepared. I did not measure to see whose property they were actually on. It's right along that property line. But there's pretty mature trees that I think act as visual divide between the two properties. As well as a, a sound dampener as well.
But the plan is those, that the unit will be placed behind those?
No, the property line, if you're looking at that survey map where it says a hundred and eighty feet, right where that one eight zero 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 is, are where the arborvities are. The generator is going to be that box that the green arrow is pointing to. So if you were, if the neighbor was coming right across and looked, they would not be able to see that generator from the neighbor's lot.
Because it would be blocked by the arborvities.
That is correct.
Right, and where is the generator going? There's a side central air conditioning unit there?
Yes, there is as well. That's so, I believe if you're looking at that same map. Where it says two seven three, right in front of that generator, there is an air conditioner. There's also some electrical. And utilities coming in at that same side of the home.
And that's where the connection would be for the generator too, would go in that same area into the house?
That is correct, yes. Beyond that point where the house jogs in. I believe it was an addition or it doesn't have a full basement underneath it where we can get our utilities out. So that made the most sense as far as the location. You can see a deck on the back, which obviously you can't go on the deck. And then the other side in the backyard, it's all landscape and he has like floor to ceiling windows, big, large windows. That the unit would be right in front of that window. And I believe it was like a type of slate or hardscape in the backyard, so there's no way for us to trench that line out there. So it seemed like this was the most. I would say that the most, the, the, the location that made the most sense for, for installation as well as aesthetics.
Now, the, the standby generator is going to be located about two feet off the house?
Um, yeah, that is correct. Because there's no windows there, it's actually going to be twenty-four inches off the home. The manufacturer specs it that we can come up to eighteen inches. So it would actually be, it would actually be twenty-four inches off the house, which allows us to keep it tighter to the house, which is nice.
And then so based upon the survey map you gave us, that would mean. That it would be approximately twenty feet from the property line.
That is correct. Yeah, that side of the unit would be twenty feet from the property line.
Okay, great. That's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, very good. Any other questions by the board?
Just for the record, could you please state what the decibel rating of this unit is?
Absolutely. It was sixty-seven decibels. Let me just confirm that. Mr. Di Stefano, I, I, I pulled that up on my. I pulled that up before the meeting was started and then I closed that out. So let me just pull that up. Yeah, sixty-seven. I believe it's on that sheet as well that I handed in.
And it's a full load?
Yeah, that is a load, correct.
Thank you.
Very good.
Quick question. You talked about, obviously it would power on if the power went out. It also has power ups, right, regular?
Yes, that's a good question. So once a week, the system will run in a test cycle. It runs for, and it's on low speed, which is like an idle. That way it makes sure that the oil is working through the engine. It keeps everything working properly. The client can choose what time it will cycle. Most, most installations we recommend, you know, during the week or the weekends or at lunchtime that we were not disturbing anybody. But if there was a neighbor, let's say was affected, it's very simple to go out there and press a button and change it to a different day or. But normally we do weekday right between twelve o'clock and one o'clock. That way it's less disturbing to any neighbors or anybody in the area.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you, John, for your first time. You did great. Thanks.
Thank you, guys, and thank you, guys, for your time and and consideration.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, all right. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public areas close.
Thank you.
Application five A ten twenty-two, application of Timothy and Ellen Mahar, owners of property located at four oh seven Brook Lawn Drive for an area variance in section two oh five dash two, to allow covered porch to extend ten plus or minus feet into the forty-foot front setback required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Uh, my name is Tim Mar. I'm the homeowner, homeowner at four oh seven Brook Lawn Drive.
Okay, Tim, go right ahead.
So I, uh, might make this a little shorter than, than everybody expected. I, we, we just, I just, we actually re-measured, uh, the corner of our, uh, of our proposed, uh, build, uh, which is about four, it's actually about forty-six feet from the street. And I guess, I don't know, I don't know if my contractor didn't pick up on that or what. But, uh, I, I guess I just wanted to make sure that the variance is forty feet from the edge of this proposed deck to the street is what we would require, you would require a variance approval for. Is that correct?
That is not correct. The, um, your, your property, your front property line is actually closer to the house than the street line, than the actual pavement.
Gotcha. Okay, so I was, I was, I was just very confused. Thank you. So, so what we're, what, I guess what we're, this is my first time.
All right.
So we, we're, we're proposing to build, um, a deck that extends, uh, you know, ten feet off of the edge of our current, um, off of the front of our house, just beyond, um, uh, where there is a current walkway. So there's a, uh, today, there's a, uh, uh, an original, uh, walkway from the driveway to, uh, what is what we call our front stoop, which is a five foot deep, five and a half foot deep, uh, mixed concrete brick, uh, stoop that did recently, um, have an, um, uh, uh, roof and pillars. Um, the, the house when we bought it about three years ago was, um, uh, falling apart in a lot of different ways, more than we realized. And we actually had to take that, that roof down, um, recently, uh, because it was separating from the house and the support structures, the pillars that were holding it up actually were failing. So it was unsafe structure. Uh, so we ended up removing that. We wanted to replace it with a fully roofed, um, uh, ten by, you know, ten foot deep by twenty foot, um, porch as a new entryway, uh, to the front of our home. And so I guess that's, that's, that's my, uh, that's my, uh, explanation for the, for the, uh, variance. There's, uh, you know, I, my, I, I read the variance incorrectly apparently. So it building, uh, from ten foot beyond this deck, we would, it would put us about forty-three feet from the, from the edge of the street.
Okay.
This, this is member Wright. Can you talk to me a little bit about whether or not there's any other um, homes in this neighborhood, this area that have these front porches or that extend into that front porch and similar, or that front setback in similar ways?
Sure. There's, we're kind of a unique little, uh, community here. We're on a cul-de-sac at the end of Brook Lawn Drive as it crosses over Westfall. So there's really four homes, I believe, that are, uh, that are on Brook Lawn Drive in this cul-de-sac. Um, and, uh, our neighbors to, uh, the east, they do not, um, have a porch. Uh, they'll walk way up to, I think what was an addition, maybe ten or fifteen years old. Our neighbors to the west, um, actually have just, um, gone through the approval process to add a number of different things onto their home, uh, but including, um, a, a front porch with the same depth of ten feet.
Okay.
Member Schwartz, have you just, curiosity, have you been to the architect's review board yet?
Uh, we try, we attempted to, um, but it was over the Zoom conference call and our, uh, we were on for quite a while, um, but we lost connectivity. Uh, our plan is to attend that meeting again, uh, at the next meeting. So I've, I've talked to John, I'm sorry, to, to Jason, I believe, or Isma.
Jason, yeah.
Um, and so we've submitted an application for the ARB as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, other questions for Mr. Maher?
Yeah, just one question. The intent of this, uh, porch is to be open, correct?
Uh, yes, it is. So we're going to have, uh, yeah, the, the idea is that we would have, uh, um, one, uh, one step that could have circumvented the entirety of the, of the porch patio so that we can have access. We have five young kids. Um, and they, they use the, the front lot very often and you'll ask my neighbors, they use the circle quite often for, um, you know, skateboarding and biking and, uh, it's a, it's our own mini racetrack. And so they, they come up on the, on the porch typically, uh, to the front door. And so we're trying to just have a more, I don't know, uh, welcoming entrance to anybody that's coming into our home.
Okay, very good. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public areas close.
Application five A eleven twenty-two, application of Erica and John Stannett, owners of property located at two Marvin Park for an area variance in section two oh seven dash two A, to allow a six point five foot stockade fence to extend eighty plus or minus feet into a front yard where a maximum three point five foot high fence is allowed by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
I just wanted to state that I'm going to be recusing myself on this application.
Okay, Ed, thank you. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, this is Erica Stannett. Thank you very much for your time tonight and for considering our application. Um, as indicated in the materials that we have put on file, we are looking to extend a fence. Um, our neighbors at four Marvin Park installed a fence a few years ago that, uh, border the East Avenue Tower parking lot. And we're looking to continue that fence across the back of our property. Um, our intent is to match the same fence, um, both for the aesthetic, aesthetic value to the homes both at four Marvin Park and at our house, and also for the aesthetic, um, value for the folks at East Avenue Tower behind. We have contacted the owner at East Avenue Tower along with the, um, head of the, um, residential group there, um, uh, who have both agreed, um, with the notion of the fence. They, they've indicated they don't have any objection and they don't have any objection to, um, continuing the height along the fence to be six foot, six inches as opposed to changing height, um, part of the way back. And my understanding is that's what we need that variance for is to allow us to maintain that six foot, six inch height across the length of the property.
Okay, very good. Okay, questions by the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ken.
Thanks so much. Um, can you let me know, do you plan on, um, in putting up any type of landscaping? Either on the, what, what is considered the front yard, but is more of a side yard for your house or along the back property line?
We do. I submitted with the application for the, um, the original application for the fence, I submitted a landscaping plan from Clover. Um, we had some junk trees in the back and a dying maple, so we took those down. Um, and then there's a, there's a, a plan to add some river birch, um, a number of other trees that Megan from Clover lawn and landscape could tell you the name of, and I'm not in a position to do so. But the town has that drawing that shows the landscaping plan along, along the back as well.
And one final question, um, just because I saw it two different places, not saying that you did it, but I just saw it in the paperwork that I received. Can you clarify, is this fence, um, six foot, five inches or six foot, six inches?
Six foot, six, uh, six foot, six inches is my understanding. Um, if it's six, five, we'll match that. We're looking to match what, uh, Christian Van den Broe's fence, fence looks like. So it'll be, um, consistent for the property owner behind us along their parking lot.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Very good. Is there anyone else who would like to ask any other questions on this application? Okay, very good, Erica. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Okay, and is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public areas close. Okay.
Application five A twelve twenty-two, application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Lease fee LLC, owner of property located at twenty-five hundred East Avenue for an area variance in section two oh seven dash forty-two C one B, to allow for cell, cellular support equipment to be located on the roof in lieu of housed in the building or in an approved addition as required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for Bell?
Uh, my name is, uh, Nate Vanderwall. I'm with the law firm of Nixon Peabody, thirteen hundred, uh, Clinton Square, Rochester, one four six oh four. Thank you, uh, to the board for the time this evening. Um, I'm also joined this evening by Will Grover, who is the site acquisition consultant in consec, in connection with the project. Uh, just briefly, uh, this board's full, uh, very aware of, uh, these projects. We're, you know, we're routinely before this board, most commonly in connection with exterior located equipment in connection with Verizon's facilities. Uh, this particular site at twenty-five hundred East Avenue, this is, I believe this site has been, uh, online since the mid nineteen nineties, I believe. Uh, but the original construction actually allowed for the location of the equipment inside, uh, the building. Uh, they, they have the antennas on the rooftop. There are, uh, other carriers i- in addition to Verizon on top of the, on this building, um, including equipment on top of the building. But up to this point, Verizon has, uh, had their equipment located inside, uh, the building. They were recently advised by the landowner that they want to utilize that space for additional residential unit and they need to re, uh, get their equipment out of that interior space. Uh, they did a review of, of the other potential spaces within the building, uh, to comply, uh, with code. And there was not a, any additional, uh, viable options uh, inside that's detailed in a, in a letter at Exhibit G to the, uh, rather, you know, thick pack of materials that we, uh, submitted to the, to the town. Um, and then ult, ultimately they arrived at, uh, locating this, uh, equipment on the rooftop of the building, a rather pro, a far more common location, uh, in fact, for rooftop facilities and then consistent with the existing uh, facilities on the rooftop. So given that, uh, the town code requires these to be located inside, as was noted, or in addition, uh, we're here before this board today for a, uh, area variance to allow for that, that exterior rooftop location.
Okay, very good. Okay, questions by the board, please?
This is member Wright. Can you speak to how, uh, this equipment will, will the, um, will be painted, how this, uh, will kind of fit in with the, uh, our equipment that's already on the building?
I don't know how, what it looks like in compared to the other equipment. Uh, there's a standard neutral color for these, um, for these, the equipment that's standard in the industry. Um, again, I'm, I, I'm not familiar with rooftop. I don't know if, if Will, if you're on, if you've been on the rooftop and can speak to how this re, uh, compares to the other equipment. Um, but from my understanding, it would be the standard industry neutral, um, cabinet color, uh, in, in platform color.
Nate, just to go, uh, on a little bit with what, um, number Wright was speaking about, could you tell us exactly what the equipment's going to be? Uh, is it the same equipment that's in the building now? They're just going to move it to the outside? Is it going to be brand new equipment that's coming onto the rooftop? Um, just kind of give us a good understanding of exactly what's being placed on, uh, that location.
Uh, I, I do not know whether it will be the same equipment, um, as what's interior, I believe, will be two equipment cabinets. I'm looking for the, through the site plan to see if I can find the specifics. And again, I don't know, is, Will should be on. Will, are you on?
Yes, I'm, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, just identify yourself, Mr. Grover.
My name is Will Grover. Uh, do you want to know my address?
Please.
Sixty-six fifteen Topath Road, East Syracuse, New York, one three oh five seven.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, there's, they are going to upgrade the antennas. The equipment will be basically the same. It's going to be the, the same setup they had in, uh, the, uh, penthouse there. We're just moving that equipment and putting it in the shelter up top there.
And could you just tell us what that equipment is? Number of cabinets? Uh, you know, is there going to be a generator located with that equipment?
No generator.
Okay, and?
I'm looking for specifics. It's, uh, same number cabinet. Do believe it's going to be two cabinets. And the shelter. Let's see here. Yeah, it's like the, the two different cabinets they had in the penthouse. It's going to be the same, but inside that shelter.
Yeah, if, if you look at page, uh, Z two, I think on the plans, you'll see it's actually a, uh, a platform as opposed to shows, not anything. And there's the cabinet showing on there within that. At least, uh, that just shows the layout. Doesn't give you, uh, color or anything like that as member Wright requested, but, uh, shows you what the layout is on that platform.
Gentlemen, would it be fair to say, I think it goes back to Rick's question, is there, there's no intention here to be expanding the equipment or this services in this location? It's simply relocating them from inside to outside?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, other questions by the board?
Yes, um, member Schwartz, I was looking to see, um, for dimensions of, of this equipment. And there isn't anything of the existing. There is a bit of what's going proposed. So I'm just wondering, um, comparison, and Rick, I don't know if you know that, or Dennis, do you know, um, how this compares to what's already there?
No. Yeah, we, I don't think we have any dimensions or anything, Judy, of what's inside the penthouse now. But I, that's why we.
Stuff on top, um, there's, there is equipment on the top now.
For other carriers, right? Not, not for this carrier.
Right, right, right. But I'm still wondering, you know, I mean, we see just a little rectangle, but it doesn't give a dimension. My concern is, is it going to be much larger? I did happen to note that the antennas look quite tall, but I, there's no comparison there. So I didn't know if anybody, you know, staff or whatever, had some information along those lines.
Okay, I know they have dimensions of the platform here, but not the actual cabinets themselves. I'm just looking at what we've got on the screen right there now.
Okay.
Yeah, the cabinets you won't see inside the shelter. So, the, the shelter is what sixteen by twenty-two? That's the lease space.
And it goes like eleven by thirteen or so.
Yeah.
It, it, is that a physical shelter or is it just a metal platform that the cabinets sit on top of?
No, it, it's covered.
It is covered.
Yeah, it's a raised platform.
And, and what's the, the height off the rooftop?
Well, hey, uh, hey Nate, can you hear me? This is, this is Robert Wilson. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, so, uh, Robert Wilson with Pyramid Network Services, uh, same address as Will, uh, six, six, one, five Topath Road, East Syracuse.
Okay.
So, uh, thi- this is a platform without a roof on it. So just to explain a little bit, um, the existing equipment is interior equipment, so it's not really in cabinets. It's, it's in more in racks inside. Um, the new equipment's going to be exterior, you know, outside equipment. It's going to be inside cabinets. So it'll look more like a refrigerator. It'll look very similar to the cabinets that are up there right now for the other carriers.
Okay, and do you know the height that the, the top point, uh, the highest point of the cabinet to the rooftop?
Uh, let me take.
Approximately, just, just go a ballpark.
I mean, they're anywhere from, you know, four to, four to six feet probably in height, I would say.
And then the, the, your platform itself is another three to, two to three feet in height?
Yeah, I would say that, yeah. It sits on the roof. It's non-penetrating. Um, it sits above the roof a little bit.
Eight to ten feet above the actual rooftop.
Roughly correct, yes.
Okay.
And Robert, would you say that's consistent with the existing cabinets that are, uh, equipment that's on the rooftop?
That's correct. And if, uh, looking at your screen that you have up right now, that, um, there's a, the, the cabinet there, right where the drawing says gamma two hundred and thirty degree azimuth, that is another carrier's platform with the cabinet sitting on it.
And.
It'll look very similar to that and that has.
And in your opinion, due to the location of this platform. And in your opinion, due to the location of this platform with cabinets kind of set back into the roof a little bit, good chances you will not see anything from ground level, correct?
That's what I understand, correct. Yeah, and Will, Will's been out there.
Turn on the roof and there's no, nobody can see it, anything up there. It's too.
Thank you.
And, you know, I guess to give a little more history here, we're in the process of renewing the lease here with the building owner. And as part of renewing that lease, he wanted that space back to, that apartment space back. So that's, it's really a requirement of the property owner to get this equipment up on the roof, similar to what's already up there with the other carriers.
And let me just ask a question. What would happen if this board denied the request?
We may have to look for another site possibly. It is, you know, it's, it's what the landlord wants in order for us to renew this lease with them.
So, so that would be a substantial hardship, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions by the board, please? Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing. Okay, why don't we take five minutes? We'll reconvene at nine twenty-two. Thank you. You awake there, Mr. Primo?
I am.
Okay, you're looking, you're looking a little tired there. You're looking a little tired.
Or maybe I am a little tired.
It's okay. Tired of this weather.
Yeah, we're supposed to get good weather starting tomorrow, right?
Are we?
Yeah.
Actually, towards the end of the, end of the weekend into next week, it's supposed to be really nice.
Oh, good.
Well, it's about time. About time.
Rick, how you holding up?
Um, I'm hanging in there.
Are you?
We'll try to be expedient.
That'll be great. I've been with this board for a long time, so. My, my, my fingers aren't crossed.
Come on.
Yeah.
I sent, I sent you an email, but congratulations on the promotion.
I know. Thank you very much. I didn't know you sat on that board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You're all over the place, Ed. Yeah, you are all over the place.
Yeah, he's a man of many talents.
Yeah.
There we go.
I was looking through the list. I said, I know that guy.
No, you, you are my one no vote. Was that what it was?
No, no. There were no votes, Rick.
What board is this?
Of the Monroe County Civil Service Commission.
Yep. Well. Need a couple of minutes here and we'll get going. Rick?
Yeah.
Can you just, I know you did in the agenda, but can you just point out which seeker that we need as we go on?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, one, two, three, and twelve.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's see. Who do we have back here? Take a survey there.
We need Heather and Andrea.
Okay, we got a couple more, two more minutes.
There's, there's Andrea.
Okay, so once we get Heather, we can start.
Matt, I gotta tell you that the reason I struggle with your name is because I had a very close friend who was Diacristo. So every time I start, every time I start DR, I go into Acristo instead of Augustine. So that is my reason that I struggle with that.
All right. I, you know, look, I, I, you know, I've had people mangle my name my whole life. It's really not at this point, you know, something that I.
Yeah, I'm the same way. And then it's, you know, I've learned to live with it too.
I have to admit, I thought it was strange that the Stefano was having trouble with the August.
Hey, hey, hey. Yeah, we all get it. Keep an eye there, Rick. Oh, there's Heather. Are you there, Heather? Looks like she's there.
No, I don't see her.
No, I don't, I don't see her, Dennis.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see her name. I'll put down her picture.
There we go.
Hello. You're now the star of the show, Heather. Okay, thanks. Okay, so let's get rolling here. So we will begin at the beginning, five eight oh one twenty-two. So let's discuss that situation. Rick or Ken, do you, you wanna shed any light on some of the, we'll call them more logistical issues related to this, these two applications, five oh one and five oh two?
You know, I, I, as long as I've been with the town, there hasn't been any parking issues between these two properties. If you look back at some historical aerial photography, you can see that there were a number of parking spaces that were parked perpendicular to the building. So there are, there were, you know, it was striped out for that. Granted, it was a restaurant, so the hours of operation were different. And usually, from my remembrance, the uses in that building were more, I would say warehouse type of retail. There was a flooring store in there for quite a while. So there never was a big push for a lot of parking need for the, I'll call it the fast and all building now. How these properties got this way, I have no idea. I mean, you look at that property line, it's the wall of the building is the property.
Right.
So I don't know the history of how, you know, how it came about. I just know that as long as I've been with the town, there's always been parking perpendicular to the building.
So, I'm sorry, was that the old, I'm sorry, was that the old Arigato restaurant? That was that one? Because yeah, that one had parking along the side, as I recall, twenty-five years ago when I moved, when I moved, when I lived in that way.
Yeah, I think there's some air, there's some aerials that show it too, so.
So going just to some of the more procedural aspects of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm, I'm interested to know what the planning board's going to do with this application. I am, I, I wouldn't be surprised if the planning board was going to move around some of those parking stalls. Maybe even eliminate some of the parking stalls that he's showing right now. And certainly would take up, many of the issues raised in opposition really go towards whether a conditional use permit should be granted, not really whether a variance should be granted relative to the intensity of the use and whether it's in harmony, if you will, with what else is going on nearby. So Rick and I talked, I mean, it's up to the applicant as to how they proceed. They might have talked to Jeff Frisch, you know, and heard what they wanted to hear. But it's always up to the applicant to decide whether they want to come here first or go to the planning board first. I, I guess Rick and I sort of, and Rick, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we sort of wanted to hear what your board sense was as to whether you wanted to either take action on this matter with the condition, of course, that they go get their permits as needed or table this matter and wait to see what the planning board does with this, with this project. So.
Hey, Ken, this is, this is Ed Primo because I've been thinking about this along the same lines. And what I might suggest that we do is that we table these applications, but then refer the EAF to the planning board and have with the request that we do a coordinated review and the planning board be the lead agency. Then have the planning board review the project, do the seeker on it and, and come up with their site plan and then have it come back to us for decisions based upon that. It strikes me, certainly, I do not feel we have enough information to make any secret determinations on this project. I, I also am struck that, and I'm still kind of getting my head around the issue that you have that other property owner whose property will be used for parking, who hasn't consented or agreed to this application. I think that needs to be worked out too. And that's certainly something that could be done in the site plan process. So that's kind of my thought about it. Let's, let's have the planning board take over the seeker review, do it on a coordinated basis, and then when they're all done, have it come back to us.
Yeah, that's a, that's a suggestion. The other thing, Ken, too, is the conditional permit for the operation of the store is a kind of a critical piece as well. Wouldn't you agree?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Huge, huge piece of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, the conditional use.
I mean, I honestly, I mean, not to, not to diminish this board's role, but the, the bigger issues they have are conditional use permit and site plan.
Yeah.
The bigger issue.
The parking seems moot in comparison to that because obviously it wouldn't even be a discussion if, you know. So it seems like we're a little backwards here. So again, we, we don't know how the advice was given and how it was taken and all that. And I guess it doesn't matter at this point, but it, it seems like we're, we're kind of boxed in a corner here a little bit. Do the rest of the board members agree with the sense of it?
One hundred percent.
Okay, great, great. Okay, Ed, you, you spoke eloquently. Could we connect the two applications and would you be willing to make a motion, please?
Yeah, let me just get the numbers and.
Is that okay, Rick?
Well, yeah, I, I just, I just want to go back on the coordinated review aspect of it.
Okay, sure.
That, that does lead to additional timing, additional seeker procedures and steps. I, I don't have a problem with the planning board and the zoning board keeping their own determinations of significance on that and regarding seeker.
Well, yeah, I'm. Rick, I, I, I guess I'm very respectfully disagree. The question is how many involved agencies are there? Because you have to do the thirty day notice to, to all of them. But if there's really just two agencies, the planning board can take this up as soon as they want to if we send on the EAF and say we consent to you being the lead agent. And then that means when it comes back to us, assuming that the planning board issues a negative declaration, that we don't even have to do seeker at all. We're, we're done. So I mean, I'll tell you, if I were the applicant, that's the way I'd want to have it done. So I don't have to keep on.
Awesome, between the two boards.
Right.
Yeah. And also you're gonna burn up the time by the time they apply for the planning board and actually get on it. So you're gonna burn up a goodly part of that too.
Well, I mean, yes and no, because our, our timeframe doesn't start until the planning board gets this application.
Yeah, actually, you're right. I'm sorry. It's not when you apply. It's.
Right, right. So.
The seeker to them, even though they don't have an application. You can't do that.
Right, but let, I mean, let's just think about the timing on this, Ed. I mean, so I, I hear you saying, you know, it, it may be a way to expedite their seeker review, but if this board simply tables the applications, does nothing on the seeker whatsoever, then the applicant makes their planning board application, gets on the next planning board agenda, which would be, they'd have to do that pretty quick, wouldn't they?
Yeah, yeah, well, by next Tuesday to get to the June meeting.
Yeah, so they'd have to apply by next Tuesday to get on the June meeting.
Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, that's a little better. So then they get on that next planning board meeting. This, the planning board at their next meeting in June, so that's late in June. Yeah, we would already have our early June meeting, wouldn't we? So we wouldn't be making a, we wouldn't be able to consent to their lead agency until July.
Right.
Yeah. I think you could, well, you could.
Ed might have a point. I, I, I can't see the planning board acting on this in one meeting, frankly.
Yeah.
Because, because they might, they might table it for variances, you know.
Well, no, 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 no.
No, hear me out. Hear me out. They, they could make a seeker finding, but still table it for variances.
Yeah, well, or would this go? I mean, I suspect what you do, I, I think we've done this before. You, you go and you get your preliminary site plan and maybe the conditional use permit with final being subject to the variances you need.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah.
Well, we can't, we can't presume what the planning board is doing.
So, okay, I'll try to make this simpler. I, I think my motion would be to table for the, the applicant to proceed to the planning board for the purposes of the conditional use permit and site plan approval.
Okay, so let's, okay, so let's, let's do this for five eight oh one and then we'll repeat it, right, Rick, for five eight oh two?
Yeah.
Okay, make it easier.
So let's make a, yeah, so let's make a formal.
Hold on. Hold on. Yes, okay, so.
Application, right, for formal motion.
And we have a, we have a motion by member Primo.
Yes.
Right, to table application five A O one. Seconded by member Wright.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Rick.
The mo- uh, the motion is to table application five A O one twenty-two. Bear with me here for a second, I gotta find my page. Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McCray Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Motion to table. Yeah, I, yes, but we did not make this, and maybe we can add on to this, Ken, ca- catch me wrong. Are we leaving the public hearing open, or do we not care to hear anymore from the applicant?
Well, what's interesting is Dennis already closed the public hearing, so.
Yeah, but we'd have to reopen.
We, if, no. I don't, I don't think there's any more testimony that anybody's looking to get here. Um, and if the board wanted to get more testimony, it could always reopen the public at a future meeting.
All right, and what I'm thinking is that maybe the applicant has discussions with the other property owner. Then maybe the applicant will want to open the public hearing. Sorry, possibly. Uh, so the motion to table carries and the public hearing is closed.
All right, so, Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we table application number five A O two dash twenty-two for referral. For the applicant to apply to the planning board. For site plan approval and a conditional use permit prior to us taking this up again.
Number Wright.
Okay, good.
The motion is to table application five A O two twenty-two, Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McCray Drury.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Primo.
Yes.
The motion to table carries.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, so the next application is fidelity. Uh, and the sign situation over at the Whole Foods Plaza. So why don't we go around on this one? Mr. Di Augustine, what do you think about this, sir?
Oh, jeez, um.
Well, you don't have to write anything, but you have to talk.
No, 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 I, uh, I. So, I mean, again, that this is, this is, um. I do think, uh, from what they said about being able to have the slightly smaller sign. It seems like it would make sense. I do understand, obviously, you go too small, it starts to look silly having it on the side and, and, and then what's the point, but. In thinking about the angle, um, where it's gonna be. It seems to me that it would be appropriate to have it on the side of the building, and so.
Have two signs.
To have two sides, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, Judy.
Um, I do not approve of it. I, it's, he even came out and said it's really for advertising. So that the people in Whole Foods can see it, and when you look at it, those two signs are going to be. I don't know if you can see, they're gonna be almost touching, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's ridiculous, and I also kind of. Take exception with the fact that they're rewriting our code. Just because they're making the first sign a little smaller, well, therefore we can have a second sign. I, I, I wasn't happy with it. I think it's, it's not necessary, and it's more for advertising than it is for wayfinding. You're gonna see that, you're really gonna see it, so I am opposed to it.
Okay, Ed.
Yeah, I, I really don't have any problem with the application that it's presented. I think the, uh. I, I kind of agree with their logic that they're keeping the overall size of the signage the same. It's very common for a building with this sort of configuration, that you'd want to have signs on the two sides. I think it always. Kind of benefits. Uh, the public in a lot of ways to be able to, able to easily identify. Uh, a business like this. Um, and I really don't have any problems with it, and I don't even have, I don't have a problem with the size of the signs.
Okay, Kathleen.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I did not, I did not have a problem with it. I find, um. Signage personally, I find it very helpful, and I thought that the way that he, they, um. Kept it within a certain amount. I thought it was persuasive and made sense to me.
Okay, Andrea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I said, I, I do want to point out that one of the comments in the objectors letter. Um, the grassroots movement was that. It, it was detrimental to nearby properties because the sign is going to be visible from the Auburn Trail. And that that's, uh, um, a, an issue for nearby properties. My problem with that is they could put it on that, that side without this variance, they just would only be able to put it on that side, you could put. A sign visible to, to Auburn Trail anyway, and make it significantly bigger if they, if they chose that side. Um, I, I take, I take Judy's comment seriously, though, about rewriting the code. Um, that now you can have t- two, as long as you, they add up to last, but I don't think that that's a reason. I don't think that's necessarily a reason to approve it, but I do think that's the mitigating factor of this, is that it, they, the signs are smaller. This is such a commercial area, um, I'm not bothered by two sign faces, I think that, that's my point, but. I think it's a mitigating factor, not a reason to approve it.
Right, okay.
Andrea, can I? Can I just add, though, on that two sign factor, they could have two signs in the front of that building if they wanted to. They could have three signs on the front of that building if they wanted to.
Yeah, just because of their street.
Cause of their, they have a hundred and fifty square feet of frontage to work with, if they wanted to split that frontage into three signs, they could do that.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, that's, I think that's, that's another mitigating factor, too, that, that, that this is just a, a placement on a different angle.
Right, and just, just for clarification, w- we, we have. Not used it as a rewrite of the code, but we have used this. We haven't, but many applicants have used this to be able to point out to us that. You know, while they felt they needed a second sign, that they mitigated it by making their primary sign smaller. So that they were entitled to a hundred square feet and did seventy and thirty or whatever they did, so this has come up numerous times, so. I, I'm not sure I would call it rewriting the code, but it is a, a way to justify the total net signage that you have, so. Okay, um, Heather?
Nah, Heather's gonna be recusing herself.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, now, I, I, I guess personally, I think the location of the building, the amount of frontage they have. I think they have respected the code, you know, as it relates to how much signage. Um, that they're entitled to and how much they need to get fairly people to see their operation. So I don't really have a problem with.
Yeah, but do we really, do we really have second? A, a second building face sign for advertising, we don't really. And he did say, yes, we want people from Whole Foods to see it.
Well, I think we.
Personally, I think that's the primary reason for that second sign, and I think it's taking advantage of us as a town. This is the first sign, signage going up, other than, than, um, Starbucks, and that's a whole other issue. We have a lot of other stores here, so, you know, um, think about it. I just, I think it's taking us up a very slippery slope, I really do, or down a slippery slope, I guess.
I, I will, I will say that the, um, the signage for the Whole Foods store has already been approved as well, the. Monument sign, it was approved, um, the storefront sign is approved. Um, I mean, all of what you're discussing, the whole board, and, you know, no matter what your opinion is, and I think all goes to. Ultimately, the issue before you, which is. Does the benefit to the applicant outweigh whatever detriment you see to health, safety, or, you know, welfare of the neighborhood? Um, and, you know, what I've heard is, um, you discuss the fact that it is a commercial center. Um, that, um, the size of the sign seems appropriate, uh, and. Um, uh, for the side of the building, um, that, uh, these mitigating factors is, Andrea, you've articulated. Um, of other signage that could be allowed there, or the total signage that could be allowed on the front of the building. Um, are, are all factors to consider. There certainly is other signs that are visible from. The property, including the pathway that people walk along on the, through the parking lot on this property. Um, the signs, not only, um, of the mattress store sitting mattress, but the hotel right across the street, the Whole Foods signs. Are gonna be obviously visible, so I think all of those go into, um. Your determination, ultimately using the factors that are articulated under the code as to. Um, the benefits of the applicant versus the detriment to the, uh, to the overall neighborhood, and. I, I think this is one of those discretionary calls, um, for the board to make. And different, different members can feel differently about it, that's okay.
Venture to say that any store going into that plaza is going to be told, oh, we're in the Whole Foods Plaza, you will find us. So, I throw that out, and I'm sure it's gonna be done. So do you really need two signs? And this is just the beginning, just the beginning. So.
Okay, so let's, we need to move on, so what, what is the pleasure of those who, i- it has? Anything that's been said, changed anyone's mind that was basically in favor of the supporting this application, has anyone changed their mind? Obviously, it's clear where Judy stands. So, does anyone feel any different? Okay, so Judy, you had this application.
And I wrote it as a denial.
Ask you to do that, we don't ask anyone to do that.
I, no, I have a denial if you want it read.
Okay, Andrea, would you mind taking a shot at this?
You do such a good job, Andrea.
That's why. All right, I'll buy you a drink, okay, all right, let's go.
Question, if I can ask, this is member McKay Drury, um, are you, do you want to read and have me indicate I'm abstaining? Or should I just continue to have my camera off?
You can, did I have your camera off? I've already indicated on the record that you're going to be recusing yourself on this matter.
Right, correct.
Okay.
You're awesome, okay, so. Ms. Tompkins, right? Por favor.
Andrea, you're saying great words, but they're muted.
You know what, I actually already finished it, so.
Never gonna hold on now, what kind of record did you just?
Nice try, nice.
Uh, I move to approve application five A dash O three dash twenty-two. Uh. For sign variance, et cetera, based on the following findings of fact. Uh, number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, the surrounding area, and in particular, the plaza where this property is located, is extremely commercial in nature. Uh, and is surrounded by properties with signage on multiple sides, period. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial. In light of the commercial nature of the property, and also in light of the fact that the. That want, that, I'm sorry, also in light of the fact that A. Uh, the size of the two signs.
Oh, you froze.
Proposed that the building combined is not larger than, I'm sorry?
You're okay, go ahead, you're okay.
Oh, uh, the A, so A, this, the size of the two proposed signs combined. Is not larger than the sign that would be permitted if on one building face, and B. Uh, given the size of the building face. Applicant would be permitted to put multiple signs on that building face. Uh, period. Uh, number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method. As the applicant testified to a desire for. Um, additional signage for wayfinding i- in the plaza. Judy, relax, okay, don't.
Second.
Four, there's no evidence that, that, yeah. Number four, there's no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on. Physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and then conditions. Um, the variance granted herein applies only to the signage as presented in the plan submitted and in the testimony given. And number two, unnecessary permits must be obtained. Are there, are there?
All necessary architecture review board and planning board approval shall be obtained.
Uh, exactly.
Okay. You have a second?
And if I could suggest just a couple additional, um, clauses. Relative to the finding. That there is no other method feasible for the applicant to pursue. If we could just add into the resolution the reference to the testimony. That there is no monument or freestanding sign available. For the applicant to put their name in the plaza. And two, if you could please amend the motion to add in. The, uh, seeker provisions relative to the adoption of the negative declaration at the beginning of the motion. Prior to asking for the approval.
Right.
Sorry, I have it on my application, I just didn't.
This was not yours, you're forgiven, that's okay.
Are those, are those change, if you could read that in, uh.
So, number, so first, uh. Uh, as an amendment to the motion as presented, uh, in the beginning. I move that the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant for application. Five A dash O three dash twenty-two, and having conducted the required review pursuant to seeker. Adopts the negative declaration prepared by the town staff. And determines that the proposed action will not likely have a significant environmental impact. So, and then in addition. Uh. On my number three, uh, so number three will now read as follows. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method as the applicant testified. I'm sorry, li- rather than rewording it, cause I don't remember what I said. Um, adding a sentence to number three that says, in addition, the applicant testified. That there were no, was no monument side to provide additional wayfaring as to, uh, uses in the plaza. That was available for the applicant's use.
And member Di Augustine, those additions to the motion are acceptable to you as the seconder?
Yes, second, yeah, still second.
And just so we can note, um, in the transcript, Holly, the. Provisions regarding the adoption of the negative declaration would actually be the first part of that resolution. With the action to be taken, approving the application to be the second part of that motion.
Okay.
All right.
We all good?
Good.
The, the motion is to approve. The Schwartz.
No.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
And Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve the conditions carries.
Okay, next, we're moving over to Whitestone Lane. Um, are there concerns about this, that we need to go around, or is everyone generally okay with this? Any concern? Any concerns? Okay, yeah, it seems pretty reasonable. I mean, there's some giant houses back there. It'd have been nice if he had some of the data, but. There are some giant houses back there.
I think, I think one of the key factors is too that the, the pool, the enclosed pool takes up a lot of that livable floor area. I don't know what.
Really living space, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that exact number is, but you certainly can use that as.
It's probably. Okay, alright Kathleen, are you good with this?
I am, but I, I did not have the enclosed pool, so I'm just.
Well, we don't know what the square footage of that is, but.
She can generalize it though. I mean, you can just generalize it that the, the enclosed pool takes up a, a, a fairly. Substantial portion of that livable floor area. Alright, not substantial portion, but a, 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 takes up a portion of.
Portion, yeah, a portion maybe, because we really don't know what it is. Okay, alright Kathleen, you could weave that in, I think.
Okay, I'll, uh, uh, and um, may I just ask one question of Rick? Does this need architectural review board, or is it so simple it does not?
It cannot be seen from the road, so it does not need it.
Alright. I move to approve application five A dash oh four dash two two. Based on the following findings of fact. One, the applicant seek two variances. The first is to allow a building addition to extend ten point four feet. Into the pre-existing non-conforming setback where a sixty foot rear setback is required by code. The second variance is to allow livable floor space to increase from, to increase from five thousand two hundred and eighty-one square feet. To five thousand nine hundred and twenty-six square feet, where a maximum four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Is allowed by code. Two, the homeowners wish to construct the one-story owner suite addition. Which will include a primary bedroom, bath, and closet and extend further. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to disclose it, period. Alternative locations were explored, includes, including a possible addition above the garage. But these locations ultimately were rejected by professionals and the homeowners due to various concerns, including, for example. Venting pool equipment through the garage roof. By building an addition in this location, the existing patio will not need to be completely removed. As the proposed location is closest in proximity to existing water and sanitary connections in the basement. Three, the granting of the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby property as the proposed addition is consistent with the look, size, and style of nearby homes. Four, while the overall livable square feet is substantial. The enclosed pool takes up a portion of the livable floor space. Moreover, the homes in this neighborhood are significantly larger than many traditional Brighton homes. In addition, the expansion in the pre-existing rear setback continues to allow a minimum of forty-three feet from the lot line. The homeowners also intend to keep the mature landscaping that line the side and rear of the property. And will block the addition from the neighbor's view and will not be visible from the street. Five, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method or without a variance. Six, there is no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions. The variance granted herein applies only to the owner suite addition described in. And in the location depicted on the application and in the testimony provided and will not apply to future projects.
Can you just add one more that all necessary building permit shall be obtained?
Yes. When I crossed out architectural review, I took out too much, so yes, that all necessary building permits. Shall be obtained.
Second, member Schwartz.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Alright, so we'll keep rolling here. Let's go over next to Hemingway. This is kind of a weird situation, actually. Weird, weird from a perspective of the lot, but. Does anyone have any concerns about this as a practical matter? The, the A and B zone thing is a kind of a convoluted thing, but. Um, does anyone have any concerns about what the applicant is trying to do?
No, but real quick, that the zone change, or not change, sorry, the zone difference only affects the rear setback. Relation, not the side setback.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, it's, I don't know that it's a factor to be used as a. I mean, it's just a factor as it relates to why they're here, I guess, so.
Well, I think you can argue that it's a factor in the, i- in it not being a noticeable change to the character of the neighborhood. If it's surrounded by properties where it would be permitted.
Yes, you could. Okay, well, you ready? Take a shot.
Who's, hey, Andrea, just can you um, state that as modified by the applicant? Because that should be a two-point-five-foot side setback, not a five-foot setback. So just do the modification as part of your decision.
Yeah, um. I move to approve application five A dash oh five dash twenty-two of Deborah Rogers. Uh, owner, et cetera, for an area there in, as modified by the applicant in testimony. To provide for, in it, to provide for, in addition to the other variances. Requested a two-point-five-foot side yard setback due to the additional overhang.
In lieu of the five-foot request, in lieu of the five-foot requested by the applicant.
Yes, in lieu of the five-foot requested by the applicant, all as otherwise described in the application and plans on file. And based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties.
Andrea, can I just stop you for a quick second? I'm sorry to do this. Um, but can you say the requested variances? Because you're gonna, you're, you're.
Sorry. The granting of the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties. Due to the curved nature of the road along which this property sits, there is a lack of consistency in the setbacks. Both from, for driveways and garages. In fact, the driveway expansion has been present at the property for five years. Without any complaint by neighbors evidencing a lack of detrimental nature. Further, the rear expansion is consistent with what would be permitted in the zone immediately adjacent to this property. Further evidencing a lack of noticeable effect on surrounding properties. Number two, the requested variances, variances are not substantial in light of the following facts. A, the rear expansion would be permissible in this location if the property was zoned as the surrounding properties are zoned. B, due to the irregular shape of the lot, the driveway extends to the side lot only at the right-of-way line. And has up to a five-foot setback, uh, I'm sorry. And ha, yes, and has up to a five-foot setback where the driveway would meet the expanded garage. Uh, C, the garage addition provides only a one-point-five-car garage, significantly smaller than the three-car garage. That would otherwise be permitted barring setback and other property comments. Number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method. As the homeowner is in need of a usable garage for storage, as well as additional living space. And car storage where no other expansion would be permitted without a variance due to front, rear, and side setbacks on the slot. And the placement of the home. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact. On the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Conditions. Number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the additions. And the expanded driveway as presented in the plan submitted and in testimony given. And number two, all necessary architectural review board approval and building permits must be obtained.
Second, Schwartz.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, the next one is over on Brightwoods. That's just the squaring up of the driveway to make it a two-bay driveway. Any concerns? There are quite a few over in that little neighborhood there.
I, it's interesting, I read the map on the site plan, but my, it deceives my eyes. Because it doesn't look like it's thirty percent. So I, I think it's gonna appear less than thirty percent.
Yeah, and, and it's early coming over there too, so.
Yeah. Thirty-five percent is what you mean, right Andrea? Because that's what the request is for thirty-five percent, not thirty.
Yes, it doesn't look that far over now.
Plus tandem parking is the worst, so.
Yeah, go ahead Heather.
Three drivers, I can only imagine. Um, okay, so uh, I move that we approve application five A oh seven twenty-two. To allow front yard pavement to be thirty-five point eight percent of the front yard in lieu of the maximum thirty percent allowed by code. Based on the following findings of fact. One, the variance will not result in a substantial change in the neighborhood because many homes in the area have. Wide enough driveways to accommodate two cars side by side, including next door, the next-door neighbor. Um, which will be the closest one to the expanded driveway and a neighbor across the street. The one-foot expansion to the edge of the garage foundation is within the allowable distance of the neighboring property. And the five-foot portion on the other side um, is already a uh, cement walkway. So there won't uh, be much visual change. Two, the difficulty necessitating the variance cannot be solved in another manner. Because the homeowners cannot fit two cars side by side if they remove the eighty-three feet. From the planned driveway widening to comply with only the uh, thirty percent uh, maximum. There are three drivers in the household and currently uh, they can only fit all of the cars in a row. By putting one in the garage. Three, the variance requested is the minimum required. Um, paving, the paving company had originally recommended. Twenty-foot width. Um, yet the homeowners have carefully reviewed and observed other properties. And concluded that this reduced plan, which would have the driveway expanded only to approximately seventeen feet wide. Is the smallest width to allow them to park side by side. And four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The neighbors have similar-sized driveways and the home already has a cement walkway nearly the same width. Uh, I'm move for approval based on the following conditions. Uh, one, that this approval is limited to the application and testimony presented. Um, and then I wasn't sure if there were any, gonna be any um, approvals needed for the driveway widening.
All necessary highway permit shall be obtained.
Okay, so number two is all necessary highway permits shall be obtained.
Second, Schwartz.
Okay, good.
The motion is to approve with condisc- conditions. Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, the next application is Highland Avenue for the pool house. So there's some interesting things to this. Why don't we kind of go around and see what everyone thinks about this? Kathleen, what do you think about it?
You know. I'm, I'm torn leaning towards approval. I think what makes me say that I'm more leaning towards approval than not is that it cannot. Really be seen by any of the neighbors. Um, and it seems to be so private that where I think that this was in a traditional suburban yard. With um, a fence that you could see right through, it would probably be obnoxious. Or kind of troublesome to look at, but this you can't see. And so while I think they could achieve. Or possibly achieve some of their basic needs of, you know, they want a bathroom and a, um, a, a changing area. I had, I had it down as a tentative yes, depending on, you know, where the group was.
Okay, alright, Andrea.
Yeah, I'm okay. I mean, i- it, it's kind of a big structure. For what we would normally approve for this, but it's also a really big yard. Um, so. I, I, I think that there's some, you know, that's a, a factor in this. Um. That, that's my thought. I, I, I can get on with it. I, I can, I can say it's not substantial in light of how big the yard is. And having a second, and, and how far the pool is from the home because of the shape of yard. I can get there.
Okay, Heather.
I'm inclined to agree. I think especially given the um, kind of reassascit nature of the um, plan. In terms of the building itself, I think that the visibility will be relatively low. Um, it is definitely quite large, uh, but they do have their reasons for why they want such a large structure. Um, because they're gonna be located pretty far from their house. Um, so I think that it makes sense and they've justified it.
Okay, Ed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. The benefit to the applicant, I mean, obviously is, is quite big, but there's no detriment or harm. To anyone else. Uh, it's a unique situation, a uniquely large parcel, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Judy?
I'm fine with it based on whatever, what everyone else has said.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I, so I have it and, you know, we'll go forward with it. I think the only real concern is, do we? Need to put any restrictions on how, how that building is used? Because again, it, to me, that's really the only issue. I agree with everybody else as far, you know, the topography of the lot, the distance from the house. There's, you know, the, the dimensioning is all fine, but it's just what, what is that building really gonna be used for? And I think when he, when I asked him about utilities and all that stuff, and I asked about heat. And then at the end, he suggested there'll be radiant heating in the floor, which means it could be used to heat that building anytime you want. Okay, so um, if all of you understand what radiant heating is, it's pipes that are actually in the concrete slab. So that it warms the entire slab, which then.
Hey Dennis, if you want to hear Matt, I, I don't think we got to him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
It's okay. No, I'm good. I know, no, I, I, I really have nothing, you know, I have all sorts of thoughts, but nothing important to add. So, for all reasons, all the reasons that uh, everyone else said, I, I think. So, for all reasons, all the reasons that uh, everyone else said, I, I think.
Okay, so.
Dennis, I'm confused by that because I'm familiar with heated floors like in bathrooms, but I wasn't under the impression that that could ever like. Actually heat a structure sufficiently.
Well, yeah, radiant heating, depending on how the density of it is put in, Heather can heat a structure. I mean, it's not gonna heat a. Uh, two thousand square foot house, but something that's open that's five hundred square feet could easily be warm to a reasonable temperature with radiant. Okay, so anyway, um, can, can I just ask you a question? Do, do you have any thoughts about? How we might be careful with this issue? Or do you?
I mean, you could, you could impose conditions, you're worried about um, somebody living there or somebody using it as residential space. You can make that as an express condition, but the reality is, is that it would be an illegal use.
Correct.
Of the property and so. You could put it in as a condition, I don't know that it's necessary to put it in as a condition.
I guess that's.
Um, Rick, what are your thoughts on that?
I always think it doesn't hurt to have it in there.
Yeah.
Just like the garages, when we say you can't occupy the, the upper level of a big detached garage. You always say, say that, so it doesn't hurt to put it in there as a condition. One more thing to hang our hat on, that's all.
Yeah, and normally, normally can we do this, but the, the other thing I was concerned about is due to the location of it, everything's down there is to. Have it be an overnight place for kids or something like that where it starts creating noise and stuff, but it's pretty hard to, to restrict that, so. Uh, you know, to say.
Yeah, I don't, you're right, Dennis, I don't think you wanna say, hey, the kids wanted to.
Overnight occupancy or.
That's gonna happen, but, but if somebody were actually to spend a week in there, that would be a little different.
Yeah, okay, so let's just say that it won't be, I, I, I got it in my condition. All right, very good, let me go then. I move you.
Can I? I guess I'm just curious about that, like, I. I guess I'm like, not sure that I understand the harm, like if a kid sleeps on the couch overnight or like. If they do use it in the winter time, like if we're allowing them to have the building.
Heather, I think, I think what it is is that.
Obviously, I would understand if they like leased it out to a tenant. Then obviously that's completely different, um, but like. If I was that homeowner, I'd probably, and my kid wanted to spend the night over there, I probably wouldn't necessarily care unless they were being. Umped.
Yeah, I.
It's, it's not that, I, I, I hear what. You know, Dennis and Rick are saying about. You know, noise, um, I look more at it as a safety issue.
Correct.
When we have a, when we have a building being used uh, regularly for residential purposes. There's a whole set of other um, code provisions. Um, not only town code provisions, but near state fire code provisions, um, that are essential to keep people safe. And so I think, you know, whether, you know, I, I think it's great that Dennis is gonna put it in there as a condition that it shall not be used for. Residential purposes or whatever language you have um, already drafted, Dennis, I'm sure is fine. But that's why it's a concern is, it's uh, it's a health and safety issue, really.
Yeah, and I think Heather, just to clarify and then we'll move on here, is that, you know, to restrict it to say that somebody can't stay there one night, but. If we have this restriction and then somebody can't come for the summer and stay there. Okay, because now they're using it as a residential structure and it, it, it's really not allowed by code to be used that way.
Right, right, because like if somebody, if they own their own pool and they wanna go for a swim at midnight, I mean. Most of us might not wanna go for a swim at midnight, but like, they can and they could.
Of course.
Their pool house obviously with it, yeah.
Abs- absolutely, and, and certainly we, you know, we've seen a rise in um, short-term rentals like Airbnb.
Right.
Over the place, so we certainly wouldn't want that situation either.
Yeah, okay. All right, you good Heather?
Yeah, thanks for that.
Clear it up, okay, yeah, yeah, we're, you know, we're not against, you know, you're doing the moral police thing down there, but. I think we just have to be a little careful to prevent them from. Encouraging them to use it for an inappropriate use, okay? All right, so I move we approve application five A O eight, based on the following findings of fact, one. While the variance is substantial, the size of the proposed structure is the minimum to meet the needs. Of the applicant due to, to the distance from the house and the grade change. Two, the site is approximately one acre and the building will not be visible from the street. Three, the structure will be built with harmonious materials to match the improvements of the principal house. Conditions, one. It is based on the testimony given and plan submitted as to the location and size of the structure. Uh, two, no, um, I don't know, help me here, Rick, what, what do you think's the right? Uh, twisted a little here as to what.
The, the pool house should not be used for residential purposes.
Okay.
Is that? Good enough?
Yeah.
I like that.
That gives the flavor of it, okay.
How down, you, the, the pool house won't constitute a separate living unit? I, I like, I like Rick's language a little bit better.
Yeah.
I'm overruled.
You're out of order, okay.
Out of order.
All right, okay, and then number three, all necessary permits shall be obtained, so it's just building permit probably, right, Rick?
Yeah, unnecessary building permits.
Okay, all right, second please.
I'm sorry. Who got that?
I got it first.
Ed.
Ed. Ed got it.
Ed got it. The motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay. Then we've got the generator, one of our billion generators.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any concerns about it over in the? Mr. Indian Spring Lane.
Uh, Rick, do you know, the, um, code requires generators not just to be in the rear yard, but also to be behind the actual. Resident.
Yep.
Um, is that unique to Brighton or does most of Monroe County have those same code requirements?
No, I'm gonna say that's unique to us. And the reason we did that was, again, with the smaller lots. We were trying to get that generator centered in the lot as best as possible.
Okay.
So it's giving the, the most buffering to each of the side property lines.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the, the only thing, Rick, and I guess I, I'd ask you this is, you know, the, that. There's a nice ar- arborvitae screen there. That, I guess I'd like to have it maintained, but it may not be on the property.
Yeah, I, I probably, since we don't know where that is, I think we just need to make it more general condition, just basically saying that. Uh, landscaping around the generator shall be maintained.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay.
All right, Ed.
Yep, I move we approve application five A oh nine twenty-two. For an area variance from section two oh three point two one. Capital B in friends, number six in friends, to allow a standby emergency generator. To be located in the side yard in lieu of the rear yard based upon the following findings of fact. One, the requested area variance is for a single family. Home. And is a type two action pursuant to six NYCRR section sign six one seven point five. C seventeen and no review is required pursuant to the state environmental quality review act. Two, the requested area variance is to allow the location of a standby generator. For power emergencies in the side yard instead of the rear yard. The rear yard is previously improved by an extensive deck and the rear of the house was in addition. The proposed location is near utility connections for the house. It is also near. A existing central. Air conditioning unit in a screen by a line of arborvitae shrubber. Three, in the context, the requested area variance is not substantial. Four, there are no other alternatives to produce the desired result, given the existing deck and utilities for the house. Five, there will be no unacceptable change in character of the neighborhood. And no substantial detriment to nearby properties is expected. The lot size is large and there will be an approximate twenty foot setback from the side property line. There is an existing, there is existing shrubbery that will block the unit from the neighbor. The unit is consistent with the existing central air conditioning unit on the side of the house. Six, the hardship is based on the existing conditions of property. Seven, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by approval of the variance. The filing conditions apply. One, the variance is based on the application submitted and only authorizes the project described therein. Two. Um. Screening by usage shrubbery will be maintained with respect to the proposed generator. Three, subject to obtaining necessary permits and inspections.
Second, Judy. Motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McCary, Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so the next one is Brookline. That's the uh, end of Brookline, if those of you who got by there off of Westfall. And. Any concerns on this? It's a cute little area vector.
Yeah.
Yeah, no concerns, anybody? Okay, Judy?
Yes, I move that we approve application five A ten twenty-two, based on the following findings of fact. One, the house is on a cul-de-sac and though the variance is substantial. It will not adversely affect the character of the area because there is no house across the street from it. And there is greenery on the tree line circle in this area. Two, the covered porch will be at the main entrance of the home and enhance it as well as provide cover. As people enter the home during inclement weather. In addition, this ten foot porch depth will allow for the door and awning windows. To be opened without the possibility of coming in contact with an individual. Three, this porch addition will not result in making this house extend closer to the street. Than those on either side of it because of the unusual layout of this cul-de-sac. Four, there is no alternative that would afford the applicant the desired result. Five, this porch is replacing one that was in disrepair and had to be removed. Conditions, one, this variance only applies to the testimony presented and written application. Two, all necessary building and planning permits must be obtained.
Judy, do you want to add something about the porch having to be an open porch or no?
Oh, yes, and, and three, this will be an open porch. Thanks, Eric.
I can't.
Heather, was that you?
No, it's Kathy.
Oh, Kathy, sorry. The motion is to approve with conditions. Hang on for one minute. Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Di Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion to approve with the conditions carries.
Okay, so then we move over to Marvin Park, that's the stockade fence over there next to the apartments. Uh, any concerns about that?
It's a pretty fence.
It's a pretty fence, then.
Yeah.
Just to note for the record again, Mr. Primo is um, recusing himself on this matter, so he's gonna turn off his camera momentarily.
Okay. All right.
I'll say it's a pretty wall. It's going to.
Well, yeah, okay.
It's going to extend eighty feet into a front yard.
Yeah, and. So that's an interesting comment, but what is your thought about it?
I don't really, you know, it's, it's up to you guys.
Well, you can have a thought, it's okay.
My thought is a six foot high fence that's running. Quite a ways into a front yard that's going to act like a wall as you travel. Uh, east and west along Clover Street.
Mean like a stockade?
Yeah.
Yes, I kinda thought the same. Okay, uh, let's go around on this. Matt, what do you think, buddy?
I, uh, I mean, it, it. Seems to, to me, it serves the same purpose as the neighbor's fence and its continuation of that fence and so. Despite the fact that it's lengthening, lengthening, I can't speak. Like, I, I don't have an issue, I don't.
Okay, all right, Andrea.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think part of it is, I, I understand that it's. I mean, it's sort of still their backyard, though, and that's sort of the, the factor here that. It, it might be a front yard because it's a corner lot and it oddly shaped corner lot at, at that.
Well, it's kinda like their side yard, I mean, I don't wanna put it's their back, I mean, it's not, I mean, the interesting thing is, is where that fence ends. It basic, well, where the six foot high fence could end would be right at the corner of their garage, so there's nothing that like. It's not like it's extending into their backyard, you know what I'm saying? They can still do six and a half feet in their backyard. Without any issue.
Right. Okay, Kathleen?
Again, I don't, it's your guys' decision.
Can we, can we look at the survey map when we talk about that, just so that I can understand exactly where you're talking about?
Yeah, uh, Brendan, you got that, five A eleven twenty-two?
Um, I think that was the one that you were, we did not have, it's.
No, we had it up, didn't we?
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, we didn't have.
Oh, wait, yeah, sorry, I was, uh.
X map.
Tax.
Not to, yeah, not that, just the, just the site plan, just the survey map. All right, you see where that existing setback line, fifty-six feet, existing setback?
Yeah.
Right there? Every, anything going towards Clover Street from that point. It is, it by code's gotta be three and a half feet, everything going to the right along the. Two hundred and eleven could be six and a half feet. So you're past the house when you actually have to go down to the three and a half feet.
Yeah.
And are they, they're just proposing the fence just along that back, the rear lot line?
Yeah, that whole entire length right to the street.
Okay, but it's not also running like on a clover. Right, it's not doing.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, it's not running like enclosing along Clover Street, no. Just kinda blocking along the um, the, the parking lot that's there.
Cause I can understand wanting it to be shorter if it was gonna be a long clover, like parallel with clover. But I do think that it might look kind of odd if it changes height.
Hmm.
All along that rear line.
Okay, all right, Judy?
I'm okay.
Okay, and. Heather, you were okay?
Yeah, I think I'm fine.
And Ed?
Ed's out on.
Oh, that's right, Ed's off.
I think Kathleen did not get to speak.
I, um, I think I got it, go ahead, Kathleen.
Yeah, I, I, I. On the paper, I didn't like it, but when I kept staring at the yard, when I looked at it, I could not. Imagine having the two different length or sizes of the fence, um.
Yeah.
And so I ended up, I ended up going with it, um, but. You know, it's almost persuade me, I can, I can, they know.
Are you comfortable that? Are you comfortable making the motion, Kathleen?
Yes, I wrote it up as a yes, so.
Okay, yeah, I think you generally have the support, so, okay, go ahead.
I move to approve.
Did we get everybody?
Yes, I, yes, I did. Ed spoke first.
Okay. I move to approve application five A dash eleven dash twenty-two, based on the following findings of fact. One, the property in question is on a larger corner lot with part of the front yard. Located on the side of the applicant's home. As such, it's considered by the homeowners to be their side yard. The homeowners wish to install a six. Six inch stockade fence, which would extend approximately eighty feet into the front yard where a minimum three point five. Foot fence is allowed by code. In order to diminish and hopefully eliminate vehicle headlights shining directly into their family room, dining room and den. Two, the adjoining neighbor's property has a similarly sized and style fence. Which the applicants wish to replicate for consistent. Which the applicants wish to replicate for consistency reasons. Three, if the homeowners were to use a three. Foot, five inch foot fence in what they consider to be their side yard and a six foot, five inch fence in the rest of the yard. It would be aesthetically unappealing and would not help them with the issue they are trying to correct. Which is eliminating the shine of headlights from vehicles parking at East Avenue Towers. That shine into their home at night in the early hours of the morning. Four, the granting of this variance would not result in any substantial detriment to nearby properties. Or otherwise adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. As other neighbors have similarly sized fences and the neighbor most affected by the fence. Comma, the owner of the East Avenue Towers comma, has consented and agrees with the plan contained herein. Five, there is no evidence that there would be a negative impact to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions, the variance applies only to the fence as described in the application and testimony provided. And will not apply to the overall fencing height or to future projects. Do they need planning board approval? Are they good? No?
Just, you might want to put all necessary, are you done?
Yes.
The all necessary building permit shall be obtained?
Thank you.
Do you want us, do, do, I don't know if you kind of covered it, number one, do you want to make a. Add to that or make another condition that it should be of style as described in the application?
Sure, I think that makes sense.
Um, do you want to rework number one, so you can add that?
Okay. I can't just simply add the word, the variance applies only to the stockade fence. As described in the application and testimonial, testimony provided.
Can I just, can I just try something else? Can I just say the, the bearing supplies only to a fence in style and location? As for plans submitted and testimony given?
Yep, I like that, that's more precise.
And I, I have just a, a little technical correction as I was listening, Kathy, I think you made reference. Differently to a three foot, five inch fence and a six foot, five inch fence. A couple times during your motion, so I would ask if you would accept an amendment that would. Change all references that start with three foot to read three point five foot. And all references that start with six foot to read six point five foot.
Ken, I would accept that, except it needs to be six point six, because that's what the homeowner corrected it to.
Oh, I, I, there is, problem is, I think we're getting confused with six foot, six inches and six point five feet. Six point five feet is six, obviously, six feet, six inches.
Okay.
That's where I was getting confused.
Right, and I think, I think what was stated in the resolution. In error was references to five inches and I just want to clarify. Three point five feet, six point five feet consistently throughout the resolution.
No inches.
That's fine.
Okay.
And Judy, is that okay with you as well?
It's fine, yes, I think it's funny, yes.
No.
The motion is to approve with conditions.
I'm here for humor.
Yes, yes.
Mr. D Augustine.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, all right, so we're at the end of the parade here and that's the rooftop. Suite for the new equipment there at the venue. Does anyone have any concerns about that?
A comment?
The what?
I said I have a comment.
Go right ahead.
It would be nice to know what they were doing.
What who was doing?
The applicants.
It would be nice if like, you know, it made a clear what equipment they were talking about.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but that was, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I asked them directly, are you relocating the equipment that's there or is it new equipment? They said they're relocating it, I mean. I'm not sure what the venue's gonna do with that space, it isn't that large, I've been in that space before and I'm not sure what they're really gonna do with it. But that's not either here nor there either, I guess.
We have, I don't, I don't know what's existing here.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a bunch of, it's like a little computer room, it's got a bunch of switches in it, that's really what it is.
The question, the question is, do we? Do we know enough? About what they're actually putting on the roof, so I think one of the descriptions was that it is going to be new equipment.
The third guy basically said, new equipment, goes that's outdoor equipment, not indoor equipment. Two cabinets on a platform.
Right.
But I think.
Do we know what that's going to look like?
It's not gonna look like anything, cause it's gonna be inside a cabinet.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, and they're already.
Oh, they shoot up in the air.
Yeah, but those aren't being changed.
Those aren't being changed, just.
And there are already other, there are other cabinets on the roof already, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's gonna look like the other cabinets on the roof.
What?
If you. Plans, Z six, I don't know if you want to bring them up, that's, there's the, like a nor, a north elevation. They didn't do all the elevations, but they did do a north elevation comparing what it looks like now to what it will look like. And it, I mean, it's full of, both of them are, the prior one and the current one are both. Proposed one are both full of equipment, I'm not sure. That it's gonna look that visually different, I guess that, that was my point, but I liked this, this north elevation. Again, it's only one elevation shot, but I do think it gives a, a good picture of what's there and how large this new equipment is.
And you're saying it's page Z as in zebra six?
Yeah. That, that's what I was using, I, yeah, application, I just wasn't sure if they were painting it, you know. Or what, what, what was all gonna be the same kind of colors with current equipment, but. Certainly give an idea of what's going on there.
I, I. I'm looking on the sheet that says existing north elevation, okay, and at the bottom, there are two different layouts. And at the bottom, it has proposed antenna, so that to me means that they're not up yet. If they're being posed.
Oh, that's. Well, they might be, no, what, what they might be doing, Judy, is they might be replacing antennas as part of this whole project. The antennas don't need our approval, they've just come in and they, they get a building permit to replace them. Yeah, what needs the approval is the support equipment that's being moved outside.
It's right in that middle area.
Right.
Right, it's, I, I, it's a, it's a metal platform with two cabinets on it, that's, that's really all it is.
Yeah, exactly.
But it was very difficult for us to get that information.
All right, right, and you know, if there's concerns about what you're really doing with it, I think in the conditions, we could, could say that. The equipment there is to support the antenna operation of the applicant and so that there's nothing else they could do in these cabinets. Or use them for any other purpose. Cause that's really all they are, it's just that the equipment has to be different because you can't control temperature in that outside cabinet. Easily, so you have to use different switches than you do when you put them inside a penthouse.
Right.
No, I, I don't, I'm not suspicious that they're gonna do anything else, I just think that they need to understand that they need to make it clear.
Oh, I agree.
To a layperson, what this equipment is.
No, I, I agree, but Ed was suspicious, so we're gonna take care of that.
Oh, yeah, well, Andrea showed me the picture I needed to see, so.
Oh, okay, so you were gonna relinquish your suspicion, okay. All right, Andrea, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm fine, but I have it, um. Just real quick, though, before I start reading, do we want a condition? That says like the equipment approved by this variant, so only support the cell equipment. Currently located on the roof and it's, and it's adequate replacement or something like that, or do we just not want that condition at all?
Uh, what do you think, Rick?
Um, I, 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 I don't think it matters because there's all multiple different users up there. So I'm sure Verizon's not gonna, their, their equipment's not gonna be used for T-Mobile or AT&amp;T.
And I can't really think of anything else they could use those cabinets for, to be honest with you anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Before, before she goes with the motion, Rick, are you comfortable with their testimony relative to the height? Off the rooftop of these units?
Well, I, you know, I've seen these cabinets and if they're true, that they're, you know, about a six-foot high cabinet and I'd like a three-foot high platform. Then, you know, we kind of guesstimated an eight to ten feet, yeah, I think, I think we're, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, I, it seemed to me that you sort of led them in that direction.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, when you asked the question, when actually several members also asked the same question, what are these boxes gonna look like? There was not a clear answer that, yeah, they're gonna be so big or so high or platform is gonna be. I mean, what I want to make sure of is that, and, and maybe you're comfortable with this, is that they're not going to be. Over twenty feet off of the rooftop, because that would require an additional variance.
Yeah, well, good, Rick, we could condition it to a maximum, couldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could.
Code's the code, I mean, the code, the code already provides, yeah, in an RHD one, they need to be no more than twenty.
Right, oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
But they, they suggested ten feet, so we don't have to go to twenty, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they, they agreed, it doesn't matter who came up with the number, but if they.
So instead of maximum of ten feet or give them two more or something, I mean.
Yeah, I'd give him twelve feet and leave it at that.
Twelve feet, how's that for a horse?
I think that's a good condition.
Okay.
And it's from the roof line?
Yeah, from the roof deck.
Deck, correct, yeah, what Rick said.
I don't know that I'd do more, I'd just say it's based on the testimony and the application given.
But, but I think the testimony was mine, though, that was the whole thing.
Heather, the, the point really is not about whether it's ten or twelve, it's that we just don't want it to approach the height of the variance. So I think twelve feet is reasonable, gives them a little bit of wiggle room. Us building people like you lawyers, see, we, we negotiate differently, that's.
Right.
Andrea, just remember seeker with this.
Oh, I've got it all ready.
All right, my friend, go right ahead here.
I move that the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant for application five A dash twelve dash twenty-two. And having conducted the required review pursuant to seeker, adopt, adopts the negative declaration. Prepared by town staff and determines that the proposed action will not likely have a significant environmental impact. I further move to approve application five A dash twelve dash twenty-two. For a variance, et cetera, all as described on application and plans on file. Based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed cell project is located in a predominantly commercial and or multi-tenant residential area. Importantly, the rooftop of the building already houses multiple wireless facilities, which is consistent visually with the equipment. And the, which is consistent visually with the equipment already located on the roof. And given the height of the building, the addition of the equipment at issue will create minimal to no visual obstruction to the neighborhood. The requested variance is not substantial, given the fact of the building already houses similar equipment. Number three, the applicant demonstrated that there is no feasible alternative for relocating. The current interior installed equipment at the site. Requiring a freestanding cell tower with equipment would create more visual impact to the area. Further, the applicant demonstrated a need for cellular service in this location in order to provide services to the community. And denying the crust, denying the request would thus create a hardship. Number four, there is evidence that proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact. On the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Conditions, number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the cellular support equipment to be located. On the roof as described in and in the location given in testimony and in the application. Number two, the height of the equipment shall be no more than twelve feet from the roof deck. And number three, wait, do they need permits?
Yeah, they need building permits.
Okay, all necessary building permits must be obtained.
Okay, a second, a second, Ed. The motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. D Augustine.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yeah.
And Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, you know that.
All right, Matt, excuse me, one quick thing, Matt, you all set to take your first applications next month?
I, I suppose.
Matt, I'll give you another month or so, don't worry about it.
You really, oh, come on.
You have a generator, Juan, come on.
If we have a generator, we'll give.
Giving them another month. I sent them the cheat sheets.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I'm just like watching, and I guess I, not that I want to hold anybody up, I know it's late, but. The objections part, I guess, like, um, I don't, I don't understand, like, and again, I, like. Why be explicit with things that are already in code? Like, why do you need to say, you know, pending acquiring the proper permits and that kind of thing? If that's something that's already required.
Because what happens, what happens is that people think that when they get their variance, they're good. When actually, no, that's just one part of the process.
Okay.
So we, we may, we reiterate in that decision that you're not done just by getting your variance. Now, you gotta get your building permit also.
It would never occur, I don't know, yeah, it would never occur to me.
Well, it's also like. And it's a strong reminder to people that what you can't do, okay, that's. Like, like, for example, the pool house, just that, that we clearly do not want this thing ever to be occupied.
Thing, I mean, accessory dwelling units aren't allowed, so why do we, you know, that's one thing, like, why do we say that?
Yeah, yeah, well, because we're allowing them to have something that's not allowed, so now, here's the conditions you can have it on. Okay, that's the way to look at it. Okay, all right, everybody. Go, 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 hold on.
Before everybody goes, so our virtual meeting executive order runs out on May fifteenth. I fully expect that it will be extended and that we will be virtual again in the month of June. But Rick will get word out to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Feel better, Rick.
Feel better, Rick, yeah.
Yeah, take care, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.